Thank you. So I will ask, Summer, you're the applicant. Could you let us know how you'd like to proceed? We'll turn it over to your team.
Yeah. Thanks, Mr. President. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission and our committee, and those who were on the Zoom meeting, Kevin and others. We are here this evening to present to you the preliminary plan. And you are very familiar with the tentative sketch plan that you had shared for review, had recommended approval on, and was approved by Borough Council Subject to Conditions. And we are here tonight with a preliminary plan application where we believe that we have complied with those conditions, but we will explain to you how. And we would also like to describe to you not only the civil plan that you've seen before, but also the landscape plan. And there has been one new member of the team added, Burnt Panzak, it's Black and Thomas Panzak, who has prepared that landscape plan. And all of the plans, the civil plans have been reviewed by Eric Johnson of Pinoni, and the landscape plan has been reviewed by Jonathan Ringenbach from Pinoni. There has been a review of the preliminary plan that is available to you. I think part of your packet from the Montgomery County Planning Commission. And I think probably the best way for us to do that would be to have Chris Young describe to you the preliminary plan and then some of the aspects of the plan that you haven't seen before that weren't part of the tentative sketch plan. And that would be the connections through sanitary sewer, stormwater management, utilities, those types of things. And then to be followed by Jack Burns, our architect, who had prepared drawings of the proposed dwellings that you've seen before, but that have since been refined, and would like to go through them with you as well. And then Burnt Panzak will go through the landscape plan. And I should note preliminarily that Mr. Ringenbach had reviewed the landscape plan. We, as you first saw that review over the weekend. And I know that we are in a position where we believe that we will be responding affirmatively and descriptively to the requests that have been made in that landscape review. We had originally been scheduled to meet with the Shade Tree Commission tomorrow night. That had been informed by Michelle Carroll, that that meeting has been postponed to a date that I don't think has been determined yet. At least, we haven't been informed of that. But we will be going to the Shade Tree Commission, and we will be discussing all of the aspects of the plan that they are concerned with. And I'm not sure to what extent they will be concerned with anything that does in some way or other affect either the street tree, shade trees, or trees that might have roots that go into the landscape. But they may have other comments on landscaping as well, and we would certainly receive them. But it is our intention to work with the landscape architect from Pinoni, Mr. Ringenbach, to address all of the points that had been raised in his review letter. So with that, unless any members of the Planning Commission have any questions for me, I'll take a seat and then turn the presentation over to Chris and Jack and Burnt Panzak in that order. Okay, thank you.
Can Joe have the use of the slide presentation? Is screen sharing available?
I'm trying to see.
Who's sharing right now?
Somebody's sharing.
It's probably Michelle, I guess.
Oh, you. Okay.
Okay. I don't know who that is.
Joe, you're sharing your screen now. Is that what we're seeing?
Probably administrator's or, it's like Michelle.
No, she's not on the meeting today.
Is Joe on?
Joe's on the meeting. I guess he's sharing, so we're not doing that.
My name's Chris Young. I'm sitting watching here for the project. And so when you last saw it, it was a two-page plan set, which had, our first sheet showed the new layout of the new lots, the buildings. It had all the zoning compliance. And the second sheet was existing additions slash demolition, showing what exists now and what's there to be removed. Now we have a 10-page plan set. The area is fully engineered. We do have, seven of those are from my office, three are from Burns. And so just to quickly talk about those, the first is just an illustrative plan sheet, which is just a pretty sheet to show the new buildings and lots without all the extra detail. Sheet two is the plan that gets recorded at the county, which just shows the new lot lines and setbacks and zoning compliance. Sheet three is that same existing additions slash demo page. Sheet four is the grading utility sheet. Five are the stormwater management details. Six is the erosion setting control sheet. And seven are the erosion control details. And so as part of that fully engineered, we added grading to the plans. And so you can find those on sheet two. We added utility lines, the utility laterals for each, each new building. So there's a sewer lateral, water lateral, gas and electric laterals. One of the questions that came up during the tentative sketch is how we would connect to public sewer, because there is no public sewer directly in front of Rockland Avenue. At the time, we didn't have the concise answer yet, because we knew there was sewer on the low side of Rockland, but there is also sewer on just up Rockland a little bit, right on the intersection, I believe it's Rittenhouse Road, if I remember correctly. We had a survey of located manholes, both down Rockland Avenue and at the intersection, and decided that down Rockland was really the better connection point. One, it would allow other properties along Rockland Avenue to connect to it. Essentially, Rockland Avenue is also municipal boundary, where everything on the north side is Norbert, and on the south side is Lower Marion. All the Lower Marion houses connect to sewer by sewer main behind them. And so on the, on the Norbert side, they connect in, well, there are lots that front on both Marion and Rockland. And so most of them will connect to Marion like this lot did before. Now, that we extend them in from Rockland, any of those other lots that have double frontage or two lots will have the opportunity to connect to Rockland. We added stormwater management systems. They were very similar to the approximate sizes that we had on the tentative sketch plans. The two stormwater systems in front of the cottages on Rockland were sized so that there would not be an overflow, and so that it would penetrate the water going there. They do still have what's called a popper emitter, so that if for some reason there was a storm larger than the design storm for the municipality, there's a little rain cap that would pop up, and the water would be, would spill out. And there's two of those on each system. The two systems in front of the buildings on Marion Avenue, they were, they were designed with some overflow. And there is an inlet just northwest of the site in Marion Avenue on, on this side of the street. And we are showing a new stormwater connection to that. So any overflow from those systems will be directly piped into the inlet as opposed to running over the sidewalk or into the street. So that is the stormwater design. One, another one of the questions during tentative sketch was what the grading would look like. And so we do have.
Screen, Mike.
We do have one-foot contour lines shown on the plan. We did propose a retaining wall in between the lots front of Marion Avenue and those front of Rockland. Basically, the, the Rockland side is higher. So we could have graded it out. It's from patio to patio. We thought it would be better to put a retaining wall in there so that the Rockland side would have a bit of a flat area by their patio, and the Marion side would also have a bit of a flat area in their real yard to use. And so that's why we proposed that retaining wall. We offset the retaining wall a little from the property line, whereas, you know, sometimes you put a retaining wall right on the property line to also signify the boundary between the two lots. In this case, we offset it so we could also get plannings on the high side of the, of the wall. And so the, the property line falls somewhere in between the property line and the plannings, so that each side was kind of impacted equally. And so that's the, the high view of the engineering. I'm happy to answer any specific questions about the engineering. We also have a review letter from Pinoni and from Montgomery County Planning Commission. I'm happy to go over those in detail. I could say just on a high view of those, there are, there will compile letters. There are a few writers that I'd like to go over with the borough engineer, just to confirm that I'm addressing them appropriately, but there's nothing that I see that we can't comply with. And similarly, the, the letter from the, from the County Planning Commission. So I think you often like to get the consultants first rather than hearing from me, so we're happy to do that later in the process, and I can come back and answer questions. But if there's any, any to start, we could do that now, or pass it on to Burnt for the landscape presentation.
Would the members of the Planning Commission mind if we just let them complete their presentation, and then ask questions? Why don't you guys go ahead?
Thank you. First, the retaining wall is about four or five feet in width. Four-foot maximum. And so the, one of the thresholds I like to work with is the four feet. Anything above four feet requires stamped calculations. And so where we can hold it at four feet, we do, just it's a, a little lower scale wall.
Well, there's a reason for that.
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks. Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jack Burns, Jack Burns Architecture, the architect of the project. I believe you have a series of drawings similar to what I have here. Just want to throw them sheet by sheet if you'd like to. In the bigger picture, while we have that up on the screen, in the top right quadrant, there's two three-story twins, which are four bedrooms, three and a half bath, front porch is facing Marion. Top left quadrant is the existing home, which will be moving over to a prepared foundation of that location early in the project. And then the two homes at the rear, we're planning on having a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath, two-story cottages with a garage. So on the first sheet, we have the basement and first floor plans for the twins up front. Pretty straightforward, open area at that level.
Excuse me. I'm sorry to interrupt you. Is it possible for your team to show these on the screen? Or does Joe have these digitally?
I mean, I can show them if that's possible.
I just asked because there's lots of people watching on Zoom, and so.
Right. That would be ideal.
Okay. If you guys can't, apparently Chloe can.
I have them here, and I can, I'm on Zoom. But I mean, if Joe's sharing right now, if he has them, he can share. If not, I'm happy to show them.
Joe, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can. Which one do you want to see?
The architectural ones, please.
Okay, just a second. See if I can do this.
The architectural or the actual architectural?
I was going to go with the architectural. The, the rest are.
Whatever he's talking to, it'd be great if the public could see him. That's all. Does that work?
This was actually Burnt's drawing, Joe.
Oh, sorry. Just a second.
Sorry.
No, that's fine. The finished, the final architecture isn't really.
How we doing?
That's the one, Joe.
Okay.
If you matter, that'd be great. Thank you. Apologies. So towards the right-hand side, we can see this, this first floor of one of the twins. They're mirrored around the centerline with a party wall. Living areas in the front, dining in the middle, kitchen at the rear, access to the rear yard through there. Good to see Joe. And then there's two stories above that. The second floor has the master suite and associated bedroom, or sorry, an associated bathroom and closets. There's an en suite bedroom in the front with its own restroom. On the right-hand side, we have two bedrooms at the third level that have a shared common bathroom with a sitting slash homework slash den type area up front. These are the floor plans of the cottages. To the left, we have a schematic of the basement layout. To the right, we see the front porch, enter into a stair hall, outer room, living area in the left, dining and kitchen at the rear, and a garage on the right-hand side that is accessed from the outdoors only. There's no interior door. Next one, Joe. And then here we have the second floor and roof of the cottages, showing a master bathroom with a closet and associated bathroom, and then two bedrooms with a hall bath and a small laundry. As far as the elevations go, here are drawings of the Marion facade of the twins on the left-hand side and the rear of those same buildings on the right. Below that, we have some calculations of facade area and window area, et cetera, et cetera, showing compliance. The next sheet has some similar drawings with the cottages. Oops, sorry. This is a side view of both of the twins. So that one of these faces interior to the current lot, and one faces the neighborhood, the neighbor down the street. And then these are some drawings of the cottages, showing the massing. And then the final sheet in this set also has some preliminary ideas of materiality for the, for the cottages as well. A little further, Joe. The idea is to use siding, the existing home, apologies, showing the siding calculations and relocation. And then our final sheet in this set has some ideas about the materiality of the buildings. The idea is to use cement siding from the standard manufacturer's color range, asphalt shingle roofs trimmed. And we're going to also have some street elevations, which were prepared by Burnt Panzak for the other plans. Any questions?
Anything you want to ask right now, or should?
Okay, so.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Panzak, landscape architect of the project. Joe, if you could go to the plan view.
Will do.
Colored plan.
Yep.
So as, as standard practice, we would review the ordinances and apply the required ordinance sections to, excuse me, to the plan for street trees, and there are sections for preserved trees and preservation of existing vegetation. We have a, a chart on sheet LP1, which is our compliance plan with the ordinances called out, and a chart of all the existing trees. We've got 284 caliper inches of trees on the site. There would be 217 removed. We're allowed to remove 25% of those totals. That's about 71 caliper inches, and we would need to replace 146 caliper inches. The trees that we were taking tree credits for were three trees along Marion Avenue that are just sliced off the page. And that gave us a tree credit with, when you apply the size, one 22-inch black cherry, that gives us three tree credits, and two trees, one 18-inch black cherry and one 14-inch Norway maple, each getting two credits for a total of four, for a total of seven tree credits. We applied those to the street tree requirements, which was eight, and that required us to have one street tree. We had three trees, as I mentioned, along Marion that occupy canopy space there. So we preserved those three. We've added the one tree along Rockland. And then there is just simply an application of the other materials across the site. And there are, you know, we just really looked at this site from a functional standpoint and provided material that we thought would be appropriate for neighbors and the future occupants in terms of screening and, and street tree canopy. Just below, where the sheet gets cut off, is the Rockland frontage that does show the one street tree, and then simply, you know, that was a kind of a mathematical calculation, but there are other shade trees that are applied within those lots. And our, our plant palette was one that was selected for the function. There are evergreen trees that will provide year-round screening and privacy buffering, and, you know, as well as shade trees that fulfill, what we believe fulfill the rest of the requirements of the, of the ordinance. Joe, if you could go to the, the two rendered elevations. This one would be an idea of what we believe the Marion Avenue frontage would look like. We've got two flanking trees, one on the left is one of the preserved trees, one behind the, the folks that are attending the Zoom meeting is sort of framing the other side. What you've got on the left are the two twins, as Jack had described. The house on the right is the existing house that will be removed. Thanks, Joe. And, you know, then the associated connective walkways to, to those units. This is our illustration of the Rockland Avenue frontage with street trees and, and really landscape material that we're speculating at this point would be provided. You know, the shrubs and some of the materials shown here, ground covers and things, are not shown as part of the requirement landscape plan. But that gives you and the public a pretty good idea, we believe, of what would be there once the project is implemented. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. Hang on, is there any? Do you have a question, Adam?
Yeah.
Okay, just one second. Is there anyone else from your team going to present? I don't remember the order of operations.
We're, we're here now to answer any questions that you may have about what we have decided with the plans.
Okay. Well, first let me thank you all for being here tonight and for the information you've given us. We, we know you've worked hard to kind of get this all organized and be here, so thank you very much for that. So we will.
Mr. President, if I could make one comment generally. I would like to thank the Planning Commission. You have been very involved with this property and an ordinance amendment that really enabled the tentative sketch plan that was approved and, and now in turn the preliminary plan, and hopefully a really nice development with a nice housing mix on this site, which when it's done, we all hope it will be a credit benefit at Norbert and, and this particular area. We are, we've been through a lot, you have been through a lot, in the process. And we spent a lot of time during the amendment process where there was an ordinance that was created that ultimately enabled the subdivision that we had. And as a result of that, we've pretty well refined the plans, we think. And there is a provision in the township, or in the, excuse me, the borough code, that says if the plan is submitted as a, a preliminary plan that really meets the requirements for a final plan, that with a recommendation from the Planning Commission, it could be approved as a final plan. I know that when Mr. Young had filed the application, the cover letter indicated that a waiver would be required, but I think when you look at the ordinance provision in question, it really doesn't require a waiver. But what it does require is a finding by the borough that the, the plan really meets the requirements for a final plan. So we're, that's where we would like to get in our discussions with you, that you get to the point where you're comfortable that we have met the requirements for a final plan and could make that recommendation to Borough Council. So I just wanted to note that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so let's start with Planning Commission questions. We'll just go around with questions, and then we'll ask our consultants to weigh in, and we'll see where we're at at that point. Adam, you said your question, and you happened to make the remarks and all these stuff.
This was a question about the landscape plan in the last presentation. The mature tree that's in the drawing in the upper right-hand corner, the largest tree. Is that, is it likely to survive or is it not? Separation required in the project with the new lateral, stormwater, relocation of the house, and winter close. I mean, is it likely to survive this project? And if so, what, you know, what steps could be taken to keep the roots intact and so on?
Yeah, I was going to try to identify it on the, on the screen there. So the upper right-hand corner was the one. We've tried hard to provide, you know, tree protection and offsets from existing trees. There was a discussion that we were having with possibility of correctional boring to keep the utility lines, which, which we have certain offsets for, as I understand it, there needs to be separation distance. And, you know, I think at this point, we believe that less than, or about a third of that canopy would be, or that root zone area would be disturbed. So it's our belief that that tree can survive this development and operation, as we believe the other trees can as well. Thank you. Any other questions, Adam? Or have any questions?
Did anyone do a drawing through the site in the other direction? So you could see the grade change and all the retaining walls. Is there such a drawing, you know, from basically north to south?
No, we didn't, we didn't do a cross-section with this general predicance. On sheet four, there are finished floor elevations that are engraved by the C G U S to see from there.
So I'm just curious about the four-foot retaining wall. I mean, Jim said it, you said it was four feet. Is it, where's the grade on either side of it? Is it four feet down?
So if I could just use my hands.
Yeah, that's fine.
So if this is Rockland Avenue here.
Yeah.
You're going to come up with the driveway and slope to the house, so that basically water will run away from the house. When we get to the back of the house, we have a little drop to get to a patio. And then there is a little slope in the backyard, so we get to the retaining wall. The retaining wall is about four foot high. So then we go down those four feet till we get to the rear yard of the Marion houses. There's a, basically a swell in the rear yard of those, which we take the water to drain so that, so that the water is going away from the wall and away from the patio so that it's not going to hit the house. We hit a patio here. We go up a couple steps to the first floor, come out, and then there's several steps to go down to get down to Marion Avenue. So I think the, the short answer is it's four feet higher on the Rockland rear yard than it is the Marion rear yard.
Okay. I mean, I guess I'm, it's just a practical thing about that kind of drop-off. I mean, I assume there's going to be a railing. I mean, I know you're planting a bunch of shrubs, but that's, doesn't place a railing.
We talked about that. And so that's the other threshold that I deal with, is the 30 inches is when you need fall protection. And so that's true when you have steps or, or, you know, walkway and then the drop. I don't believe that's required for rear yard area where you're not walking above it. And so we're, we're discussing whether the plannings are enough or whether we also think there should be some fall protection. And so that's the other threshold that I deal with is the 30 inches is when you need fall protection. And so that's true when you have steps or, you know, a walkway and then the drop. I don't believe that's required for a rear yard area where you're not walking above it. And so we're discussing whether the plans are enough or whether we also think there should be some fall protection.
I think the building could require...
If I were a parent living in one of those two houses on Rockland, I would...
It's gonna be a big tripping house.
I would want one.
Yeah.
If I were not a parent, I wouldn't care.
38.
Unless I were a heavy drinker.
Anyway, it's not a, it's a practical matter.
Yeah. What's the, what would you recommend the wall be made out of?
So we discussed that as well, and right now we're identifying as a concrete retaining wall. And so we, one of the discussions is sometimes the segmental block walls are a little cheaper. The issue with those is that the segmental block walls also have a geogrid behind them. And so with all the plannings that we wanted there, we didn't think that the geogrid was gonna work. So whichever kind of wall we chose, we wanted it to have kind of a small footprint and not have much behind it. So we also discussed with the, you know, four new foundations being excavated, that we might find some boulders or something we could use as wall. But we also were concerned with that, that, well, you know, if you need a certain size boulder to make the wall, that also increases the width of it. So right now, we're showing that concrete retaining wall. We did talk internally, you know, during construction, if we found some boulders, if maybe, you know, starting on the short side of the wall side, if maybe boulders might extend for a certain period. But for now, it's showing as a concrete retaining wall.
I ask because you can always drill a handrail.
Or maybe a wide planting bed.
You can't with the information, you can't do this.
Less information, but still...
Adam, do you have any other questions?
No.
Jim, do you have any questions?
I asked this last time, but what is the contingency plan if the moving of the original house fails? You know, what if it fails to be installed in the new site? What happens then?
The contingency plan is the same as you would have for any historic home that failed. I mean, we are, we call it the move. In fact, if there are questions about the move, Mr. Robert Sallow is here from Moving could answer those questions. I think you're pretty familiar with how that would work, but if you do have any specific questions, he could answer them. But the short answer is they don't, they don't miss and they don't drop these things. It's very careful, very methodical. But if there were to be some failure, obviously there, we'd need to come back. The plan would be approved, it would be recorded, this would be a during construction move. I think the intention would be to, we would have a foundation for it at that point. So the house would have to fit on the foundation, absent doing a foundation. And I think the idea would be probably to replicate the exterior of the home and then finish the interior with what could be the same or somewhat revised for a plan. So I think the answer is there's not gonna be failure. Should that happen, should there be a fire, should there be a failure, should there be anything, that we'd be working with that foundation, with that footprint, and the design would be obviously sensitive to the existing architecture and what's on the adjoining property as well, which we believe is sensitive to the existing home and the existing architecture on the street.
Thanks. Do we happen to get an opinion from a solicitor about what might happen in that scenario? Because I think that's an unanticipated scenario. It sounds like it's very unlikely, still in favor of this, but it might be a loophole, we might wanna loophole it for the future. You know, future sites that might wanna just move aside the existing house to make way for, you know, take advantage of, you know, these, you know, smaller house building on the lawn.
Well, Mr. Frank, I have a follow-up question to, if you have a, and maybe Kevin, you can weigh in. The house that you're moving has a building footprint, right? It has a height, it has setbacks and all of that. Would it be, on its own, would it, would it be compliant with the dimensional requirements of the code?
Yes.
Okay. So you could actually, if the house wasn't there, you could build a house just like that and it would be compliant with the...
Correct. But there are no variances that were needed for the house that was, is being moved. It's compliant as if it were a brand-new house, no special setback relief or height relief or anything else for it.
Except that it's sitting on an undersized lot, you know, it's less... Let's clarify that.
Would it... The lot is not an undersized lot.
I mean, if no house was on the lot, a lot of 3,987 square feet.
But it's being, could you explain why you believe that the house is being planned on the lot?
The lot is being created for this house, the great, fair block. But as with any house that would qualify for this treatment, there's that possibility down the road, either sooner or later, that there's some catastrophic event to that house. So, you know, once the, it's approved and you move it, we can't guarantee that there would never be a fire in there. That could happen, in which case you'd be confronted with a similar situation at an unknown later date that you might possibly be confronted with here. I think the thought here is that this isn't a 90% proposition where we think it's nine out of 10 that we're gonna have a successful move. We believe it's 10 out of 10 with the thought that anything's possible, and it certainly falls under that category, that it's possible that something could happen, could have an earthquake during the move. I don't know. But, you know...
You would be entitled to rebuild a house of that size and that scale, Matt.
Yeah, I think that can be, it can be replicated, okay? The house could be replicated. Would it be the same house? No. You know, if it collapsed or burned, but you could replicate it. So the idea would be, we're not trying to get any advantage here. There's just good faith effort to preserve that house, to move it with the highest level of confidence that it will be successful. Obviously, this would be pretty catastrophic financially if there were to be now, there's insurance and everything else which might be available, but obviously it would be a bad event for this property owner. Were that to happen, then our client has every reason to believe it won't happen and that the move will be successful.
I wonder if this would satisfy you and if this would be acceptable to you? In the 100,000 event the move is not successful, would you agree to obtaining a certificate of appropriateness from the Hart for any new house that's built there?
Yeah, I think we'd need to do that, so yes.
I just would like to quick this the rest, but I think that...
Yeah, it's a big part of why we're offering this type of layout on these lots, like preserving existing house. If we're not preserving the house, then, you know, we've done a lot of, you know, we've gone through a lot of trouble for not sure what, contingency.
But to be fair, Jim, in any kind of renovation process, there could be...
Yeah, I understand.
So I think, you know, they're, they're trying to establish that if the house were damaged, it could be recreated and they would obtain a certificate of appropriateness for any work done. So would that satisfy you?
I'm satisfied. I'm gonna just cross my fingers if this all works out.
For all the... I think the more likely scenario is that there might be some relatively minor damage that happens during the move. And for me, the only question is, you know, is it a fair expectation that that kind of damage would, would be repaired to match the existing condition of the house?
That's totally fair. And I think that Mr. Bressi's thought is totally fair and appropriate as well, that should there be that catastrophic event or any event that would, you know, create a question as to the integrity of the home, that if there would be some restoration that was needed other than simply replicating, that that would obtain a certificate of appropriateness for that work?
A moved house has to get a certificate of occupancy.
Correct.
And so at that juncture, any significant depreciation, shall we say, of the existing house moved would have to be rectified, right?
Correct, yeah. Without envisioning what the extent of the damage might be, certainly if it was a limestone, it's in the nature of a repair. That's one thing. If there would be something that would be larger in the nature of replacement, depending upon what it was, you would, I think, attempt to reestablish the integrity of the house in kind, but if there were to be any modification of that, then certificate of appropriateness would seem to be an appropriate way to handle it.
Any other questions?
I think we should all just knock on wood, just ceremonial.
Yeah, I do know this. If our client felt they needed to cross their fingers or knock on wood, they probably would be doing this.
Oh, I'll bet you that.
And that doesn't mean that they will knock on wood.
Jim, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Dave, you have any questions?
Yeah, my only question is, I guess is this, is for, well, for the existing house. Are you planning on replacing the windows or are they remaining?
No. Oh, someone just had the replacement.
I'm sorry.
Someone just had the replacement.
I just replaced those windows a couple of years back.
Have you, have you determined what the windows will be in the new construction here?
We are about to manufacture it.
I've been doing it for a while.
One second.
Speak.
Whoever is speaking.
We are about to manufacture it.
Any other questions?
No.
Jen, you are the last planning commissioner besides me. Do you have any questions you'd like to ask?
The only thing that occurred to me was, just out of curiosity, this has been kind of a bee in my bonnet, but just wondering if we have to, when we're looking at, as part of requirements, is there like a site elevation? Do we see like a street front with adjacencies and elevation facades or no? I see they've met all the facade requirements. I'm just wondering if we get the graphic.
Bert Pantek can answer that, but I think the plans that I'm familiar with that have been developed just show the frontages of this property, both on Rockland and on Marion. I don't think we have gotten to show the dwellings that join this property on either of the streets.
Okay.
Somebody in your team said you were working on those? I may have misunderstood.
This, we didn't prepare the adjacent property.
I thought I heard someone say they were still working on that, but I misheard it. That's okay. I don't believe that's a requirement at this point, Jen.
Okay.
I have one question. Do you, I'm sorry, do you have any other questions, Jen? Is that your only question or do you have others?
That's it. Thank you.
I just one question, which is to make a sewage connection to Rockland Avenue, do you require any permissions from Lower Marion Township or is that entirely within the borough's jurisdiction?
So I believe that it's the borough sewer. However, all of the borough sewer then travels into Lower Marion and then to City of Philadelphia. And so for any new sewer connections, we need sign off from the borough, Lower Marion Township, City of Philadelphia, Water Department, and then we package that up and send it to D E P for the final. I believe it's an extension of the borough facilities, but yes, we do also need Lower Marion Township.
Do you need their permission for a street opening or, I don't know where the boundary actually is?
I believe the full road. I believe the full extent of Rockland is in the borough.
In the borough or in the township?
Double check that.
We'll think about that for a minute before I give you the final answer. That's my only question. I'd like to ask our staff team here to bring your attention, any aspects of your review that you would like to ask about or would like to ask the applicant about tonight. I'll start with Kevin Walsh. Could you, your letter basically said you had no comments this time. I just wanna make sure there's nothing you'd like to call our attention or compliant with the revised code that we just passed a few, a few months ago.
Yeah, everything's compliant and I think Fred had mentioned, everything that they submitted to me actually would be considered as far as final plan approval. So even if we don't let them that waiver, my final plan approval is gonna be the same letter, just with a new document. My one comment, I think that Jim had mentioned, if that retaining wall does go over four feet, just please have the applicant's team submit revised, some engineer's calculations for that wall and a separate fence and wall permit application would then be required.
Okay. Eric, can you share any aspects of your letter that you think we should be aware of?
Sure. Just to circle back, that Rockland Avenue, yeah, it does fall within, fully within the borough, so that is our road and it'll be our sanitary sewer. So there'll be an extension to our sewer and you just have to get all downstream approvals like you would for any other sanitary sewer facility. Similar to what Kevin had just said, given that there was that consideration, if this was a primary or a file, I have reviewed it against both standards. And the only comments that I've come up with are pretty technical in nature. And if we, you know, if you were to separate this out into a preliminary final, I'm not really gonna change my letter either way. So the, most of the comments are pretty straightforward. The ones I would just call attention to are related to the stormwater management, which I believe me and Chris Yon will probably talk about at some point. And they're really some technical details of make sure you have the proper agreements and agreements in place with the storm sewer, make sure you can be building the basins as they are proposed. And maybe just, Chris, I gave the opportunity, I know one of the comments that had come up was about the basin four with the infiltration testing that occurred. And I think we kind of talked about, but maybe you can just fill in where you think we are.
And so we just, we did the properties, there are four projects. There is the existing house in the upper right and the existing garage in lower left. So we did infiltration testing in the upper left and lower right. And the first hole we dug in the lower right, they hit rock at four feet, but when they moved about 20 feet north, they had no limiting zone all the way down to 10 feet. And that was the same in the upper left, was no limiting zone to 10 feet, very good infiltration test results. And so what I discussed with Eric was to include in the construction, to use the results that we had, but in the construction timing sequence, it required that additional testing be done prior to the installation of those systems to, basically, once the house is moved, once the garage is removed and the driveway, the deck that was in front, once those things are removed and we have access to the exact location of the new systems to do an additional test during construction to confirm that everything's acceptable.
And even if we had a, let's say the results still weren't favorable there, it's, we can move the base around and alter around the property to meet the stormwater requirements.
That's correct.
Correct. Yeah. So that's really the main technical point. The only other comment I raised attention to is in light of the various discussions the borough is having and in light of the borough's climate action plan encouraging the applicant to consider green building practices as part of this development. And then I'll just summarize in general the landscaping review letter that was completed by my colleague. I think the, just... I think the, just, the main gist of that letter boiled down to ensuring that the development can be constructed without negatively impacting the existing trees, and that the selection of trees that they're using to fill in is appropriate, you know, for how we want to, what type of plantings that we want to see as part of residential development.
What is the metric that we use for appropriate? Is there like a landscaping list and a landscaping ordinance?
The landscaping ordinance references a list that does not appear to exist anywhere. I think it references available at the Borough.
References what?
I think the stormwater, I think the landscaping ordinance references a landscaping list available at the Borough office that nobody knows.
I'm sure it's down there somewhere.
Nobody knows about.
All right, so how do we evaluate an application then? I mean, this isn't the first time we've got a landscape plan.
Yeah. Well, I think specifically, there's a note on the plan, it has the replacement tree calculation. It's, you replace a tree, you have to replace a tree with two and a half inch caliper. And do we want, but it's always that great area in a landscape plan of, there's an eight foot evergreen tree, this meet, the two and a half inch caliper, it's like a multi-stem landscaping, evergreen. And I think that was kind of, that's part of the conversation for, that was going to be had with the shade tree.
What's the conversation, so does that mean we're going to, we published a table of trees that are appropriate for replacement species, that on the list?
I believe there, I think in line with a lot of the other updates that have been done, the landscaping ordinance is in that list at some point.
It is. I will just also offer that we do have, like a Montgomery County recommended plant list that we can offer to the Borough if that's helpful. I mean, if it hasn't been formally adopted, it may just be optional guidance. I don't think, if there's a lot of plants on it, I don't think it's that difficult for a landscaping.
Chloe, do you, do you have any other comments, Eric?
I do not.
Thank you. Thanks for representing the whole team there. Chloe, you also had some comments about the landscaping, are there any comments you'd like to call to our attention?
Really, the only one is just about the hedgerow that's existing between the property and, if you're, if you look at it from the street on Marion, you can see that on the, if you're facing the property, it would be to the right side, or to the west edge, there's an evergreen hedgerow from Marion. And it is shown on the existing conditions of the landscape plan. It's just this right here. There's an existing evergreen hedgerow shown here. It's not marked to be removed, it's not actually really, but it isn't, there's nothing shown, sorry, to replace it there, and that is a place where the house, when it's moved, is going to be quite close to the property line, to this existing home on the neighboring property. So if any way to preserve that evergreen hedgerow or plant something else there, I think that would be beneficial to the future occupants of these properties. That's really my only comment.
Okay. Let's, I think there's a couple of questions about landscaping that I'd like to ask about. There's a question, a public comment about green building, which is also a suggestion that the Borough Engineer made. So if you don't mind, I'd like to ask a question if you about the landscaping. So in terms of the suggestion that Chloe and MCPC made about that hedgerow, what are your thoughts about that?
Could you repeat that? I'm having a little trouble.
Sure, I'm sorry, I don't remember to use my outside voice. Chloe just made a suggestion, which was in the review letter regarding a hedgerow adjacent to, I guess, the west side of the property. Wasn't clear what the plans for that were. Could you talk about that?
I think that it had become clearer over time that that hedgerow may be impacted during the movement of the house. And, you know, we understand that that's probably a pretty sensitive property line, and that some additional plant material would be appropriate in that space. I had a quick conversation with Jonathan this afternoon. We talked about some of these issues, and, you know, we had planned to meet with the Shade Tree Commission tomorrow, that we put off till next week. And we're happy to, you know, have a dialogue with them and to modify the plan with appropriate materials along that edge. So, yeah. Be able to do that.
My other question is, I'm not well versed on the Borough's landscape ordinance, or it's lacked their hub of a list. So my question is, to what extent are you planning, in any new plantings that you put in, whether they're trees or ground plantings?
Right.
To what extent are you going to be specifying native species, pollinator plants, things like that?
Well, this became a very functionally driven landscape plan, with sort of space being the main criteria for the plan, and we really searched the native palette to try and apply native species here. But we found that what's on the plan really was the thing that served that purpose of function the best. Do have juniper virginiana in there, and, you know, some maple trees. And again, you know, we're open to the dialogue with the Shade Tree Commission, and, you know, if we go through and vet that for adapting the plan to, you know, perhaps a bit more native palette, again, we're open to that.
Okay. I would hope that you would make all efforts possible. I would certainly think there might be more resources out there that, I don't know what you've looked at, but I would certainly think of some, you know, that you could look at as well. Having just like dug out half my yard and put in native plants.
Right, right.
They're out there. So I think that's something we would certainly like to hear back about, that investigation. I mean, I would. Let's see, so looking to, the other question, which came from the public tonight, was, can we learn about any green building plans you have for these homes?
Sure. We, what we design, we tend to look towards green as a goal to aspire towards, but as of this point, we don't have a specific plan in place for the green construction of these buildings, we're still kind of thinking big, raw, or strokes about why. I would say that the act of salvaging and moving a house is a very green act. All the investment energy in that house being maintained is not a small feat, and it's probably a great expense in order to do that. But we will keep an eye towards doing things during the process, but I don't have a specific plan in place right now.
Yeah, during the last meeting that we had, we actually, somebody brought that up, and we had expressed that we were open to hearing ideas that the Borough might have, that we could adopt with thoughtfulness about the event. We were checking that out.
Well, stick around for the next agenda item. We've been working hard on this. I think, you know, in the construction phase is very challenging, but I think what we'll be looking at in the future for other kinds of developments are some relatively simple things, like not doing any fossil fuel hookups, just doing all electric. Some people I've talked to who privately contacted me about this and said, this is how they're building now anyway. I don't know what the differential is in terms of that versus fossil fuel hookups. I'll be honest, I think if it were legal, we would probably do that right now in our booth, but it's not legal to mandate that. Sorry, Summer, what do you?
When we moved in, so we've been in this home for over a decade, and when we moved in, we had a humongous oil tank that took up about a quarter of the basement. And, I mean, we removed that.
Yeah.
That was a huge emergency in itself.
Yeah, it sure is, right. And other things we've been talking about are simply, you know, procuring any electricity from renewable sources. So those are, you could look at the draft ordinance, green building ordinance we have, which would not apply to your development, but which would apply to certain future developments. And you can see, you know, those are the ideas we're working with. And most of the people who are building, who I know of who would come in after this was passed are generally pretty supportive of that. It doesn't seem like there's, we're far away from what the building industry is, would easily support. But that would, that would be something we'd urge you to look at as well.
Yeah, you can let us know about how you can get that version of the ID.
It's attached to the agenda for tonight's meeting, and so you just go to our website and download our agenda, and the documentation is all right there. Yeah, thank you. Okay, so we really have two issues on the table here. One is to discuss a approval of a, excuse me, there's one other public comment, I should say, and I should also ask if there's any public comment from people who are in the meeting. So first thing I'll ask is, I think the only people here at the meeting are your team, so is there anyone who's in this meeting from the public who would like to make a comment or ask a question about this project? Okay, Suzanne, I will recognize you, but you'll need to turn your voice.
Okay, thank you, thank you. My neighbor, can you hear me?
Can you tell us your name and address, please?
Yes, Suzanne Welly, 158 Marion Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
My neighbor, Adam Kazin of 156 Marion Avenue, could not make the meeting tonight. However, he sent you an email that he wanted you to read during the comments section of this meeting tonight. Apparently, there's some issues with property lines between 150 and 146 Marion Avenue.
And I will, I will read that email as part of public comment. I just wanted the people at the meeting to have the first chance to comment. So as soon as we're done with that, I'll read his email.
Okay.
Is there anything else you wanted to say?
No.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the public who would like to make a comment on this project? Okay, so we will end the public comment from people at the meeting. I will try real hard to call up this email. So this is from Adam Kazin of 156 Marion Avenue, sent me this today, which I did pass on to the applicant. 156, so his address is 156 Marion Avenue. 156 Marion Avenue is on the north side of 100 Rockland Marion Avenue, the same side of the block as 146 Marion. The next house is 150 Marion and 146 Marion, so he looks two houses up. About six years ago, I worked with our neighbors Frank and Mary Pat at 150 Marion to put up a fence between our properties. Survey of the property lines was completed, along with the Norbert Fence Permit. The surveyor for the fence had a difficult time due to the fact that coming from one side of the block, the property lines would be in one place, and coming from the other side of the block, the property lines would be in another place. This is an interesting insight, one from a property surveyor. Recently, a surveyor hired by the owner of 146 Marion placed a property line point between 156 Marion and 150 Marion. This new point was about four feet off the property line of post survey, of the post of the surveyor of six years ago. It appears that the owner of 146 Marion hired a surveyor, then hired another second surveyor after hiring the first. If 146 neighbors get surveys and have different property lines, what may happen? So that's the comment that he made. I'll offer you a chance to comment or respond. If there's anything you'd like to say, then I'll respond to his email.
I'm going to take a brief comment, and I'm going to ask Chris Young, who's a civil engineer, although Chris may not be a registered land surveyor, but he's a lot closer to a registered land surveyor than I am. You do have from time to time these questions about where is the starting point, and depending upon what the, you know, start of deed description from an intersection that is that way versus an intersection that is that way. From time to time, not often, but from time to time, you do have discrepancies and deeds. We have no reason to believe that our survey is in any way erroneous. This is the first we learned of this late this afternoon after the email had come in. If there is any question with regard to some survey discrepancy, I mean, the sensible thing to do, I think, is to have the surveyors talk to each other and see if they can't understand why the other surveyor has looked at a property a certain way, and then see if they can't reconcile those surveys. Chris, did you have any comments on that? I heard. So that's the sensible thing to do, I think, when a question like this comes up. The surveyors talk to each other and see if they can. And I think quite often, they do, and they can point out something to the other surveyor, and how the survey that was justified. But I think what we're talking about here is a lot that has the frontage that is within our deed and everything else, so I don't think that's going to affect our plan in any way, but since it's been raised, it would be sensible to look at. Okay, thank you.
I would add two bucks. One is I talked to Summer and Joe, and they've only had one survey. The first survey was done about two years ago, as the building has been going on for some time. They did go out recently to pick up that sewer information, but it's the same surveyor, so that there's only one from last time. And I guess the other point is, the discrepancy that I saw from the email was a discrepancy between 150 and 156, and not a discrepancy at this spot.
Not to belabor it, but I think the implication of this email is that the survey of 146 Marion placed a point somewhere in relationship to that other line. I don't even know if that's how surveyors work, but that's what this says.
I think I could go through a little, I mean, this is the way I know surveyors. There's two surveyors who I recognize, because I know, I trust both of them, I know that they will stand up for their work, and one of them did this project. There are, and there's, I'm sure there's lots of other surveyors who are good, but I know these two are good, and I also know some others who are not. What they do is they get a deed for this property, they get a deed for the properties around it. They plot those in CAD and put them together like a Jigsaw puzzle. They should all fit tightly. There shouldn't be any overlap or any gap between them. And what they do is they create that, print out that CAD file, so that the surveyor in the field has a map to go by to look for not just the property again, but the properties around it, so that they can fit together that big Jigsaw puzzle of how does everything fit together. If you only look for one line at a time, then that's how you can have trouble coming from this side that's 12 feet over from coming from this side, whereas if you look at the overall, you have a better view of how everything fits together. So as Fred said, we're very confident with this, that that was going through.
Okay, thank you. Eric, man, but you're at a spot.
Sure.
Does the Borough ever have a duty to verify any information like this that is presented in applications?
Well, I can tell you. Well, as part of this, on this plan, on this reported plan, there's actually a required signature block that has to be signed and sealed, or signed by that, by the surveyor of the property, testing to the accuracy of the survey.
Right. But does the Borough ever have a duty to independently verify, or once it's sealed, is it?
Well, I mean, it's, in the regular course, we would not be going out to verify that survey, because it is signed and sealed by a professional engineer, a land surveyor, attesting to its accuracy. Now, of course, if there is conflicts that arise, we're involved as a party potentially, but as far for a land development, the regular course will not verify that.
So it almost requires somebody bringing forward verified information that is in conflict with that which was provided to us.
Correct.
And that, okay, that's right, that's right.
It looks like there's people in the waiting room.
What's that?
Are you in charge of letting people in and out of the waiting room? Are you in charge of letting people in and out of the waiting room?
Uh, she's already in there.
I know, I think someone's gotten picked out or something, just.
Sorry.
So Jim, what was your question going to be?
Oh, I was wondering, do the surveyors of this property have a duty to inform the property owners, I guess at 150, that, you know, do they have like a right of redress or something, you know, if they feel like their property is being encroached on in any way, or?
Well, as, I would say, as a property owner, individual property owner, if you feel like your property is being infringed upon, it ultimately falls on the property owner to know and defend their property line at the end of the day. So if you feel like there, something is not correct, or you need to verify it, really the only way to do that is to have your own surveyor.
Are we counting on that property owner to bring forth a complaint at this point, or?
What do you mean, counting on?
Well, if there is no -- so the person who wrote to us is not the property owner next door, right? You know, if this person is just passively accepting the new line, is it passive acceptance? Is that final then, or?
I think the property owner of 150 Marion Avenue is in the process of getting.
Suzanne, Suzanne, I'm sorry. If you want to be recognized, please raise your hand.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So Eric, did you want to?
I mean, if I'm -- based on what, just listening to what's been heard, it sounds like there may be somebody's disputing a property line between 150 and 156, which is remote of the property line that we're discussing as part of this development. So I see that it seems to be a separate survey issue compared to this property. But, you know, if someone has a dispute, they can bring it forth, and you can assist.
Suzanne, did you want to be recognized?
Sure. You know, from what I understand, and I'm sorry, this is hearsay, but I believe it's between the 150 property and 146. But, and property 150 is in the process of getting a survey. I think adjacent properties to 146 are getting their own surveys.
Well, I would -- the question was addressed to me in the email. What, I think the question was, if 146 neighbors get surveys on different property lines, what may happen? And my response is along the line of Mr. Fromholmes', which is if there is a different interpretation survey, the adjacent property owners need to discuss this with each other, with their surveyors, and, you know, it's really a matter between them, and if it impacts the way of development in any way, you know, in a way, the -- I'm sure one of the owners would bring that to the attention, the attention of the borough, if in some way that we're relying on a inaccurate survey. So I kind of feel like this is more of a, someone needs to actually do a survey that provides actual information, that there's a, you know, no one's done that yet. They're just all like talking, right? So if someone wants to do a survey and comes up with a different result and wants to submit it, they can, the first thing to do is to submit it to the owners of this property to see what they can do between themselves to resolve it, and I would assume if someone has a competing survey and is not satisfied with how that goes, they can bring it to the attention of the borough. Without an actual survey that documents some alternative property line, I don't really think there's anything to talk about here. So that's my response to the email, which is until there's actually an actual survey stamped and signed by a surveyor that provides a different, you know, statement about where these property lines are, I really don't think there's anything to say about. So I'm gonna, I don't want to waste a lot of time on that issue, or spend more time on that issue. I think that everyone here is sort of indicating that will be a process. So our question is then, we have two questions. One is recommendation on the preliminary plan, which has been submitted to us.
Todd, there's another comment.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, just there's another public comment, it looks like, from the person who was unmuted and then got muted back.
I didn't actually see that, so I apologize. Let's hear the comment. Is it Frank Perry?
Rex.
I see, you're named administrator. Okay. We'll take your comment.
Hi, this is Frank Perry. I'm the owner at 150, adjacent to the 146 property. I have considered getting a, my own survey of our mutual property line, and I'm wondering, if I get that, I was wondering what the impact would be.
Well, first of all, it's a little hard hearing you. I don't know if you have a few speakers on or not, but your question was, if you get your own survey, then I didn't hear the rest of your question.
I'm going to get a survey, but I wasn't sure if it would, if I could catch up with the process at this point. So if I do that and complete the survey, and there's a dispute, how does that get handled?
First of all, I'm not here to give legal advice to anybody. It's not my job. I think as a practical matter, we've discussed that if you're to obtain a survey that produced a different outcome, your first step would be to contact, you know, your neighbor, the adjacent property owner. As Mr. Fromholmes said, to have the surveyors discuss why they've come up with different results. If it's a dispute, then I believe you should seek legal representation and then pursue the dispute in the way that your council tells you to pursue it. I can't say any more than that, but I would say it's my, be my expectation that there's really nothing actionable for the borough to do until there is information brought to the table that calls into question the information that we've been asked to rely on for this application. So far, I assume it would need to be a survey that would be, you know, produced by, and stamped, as Eric said, by a licensed surveyor. If the two surveyors can't resolve that, I would imagine you would bring it to the attention of the borough solicitor, and the borough solicitor would convene the parties to figure out what to do. So that's really all I can say about that.
Good, thank you.
But that is not really, I don't think that's a consideration for us, because we don't really have anything before us that would cause us to doubt the information that the borough has. So the question, the two questions then are about approving a preliminary plan. And then the second one is whether we would consider also approving this as a final plan. The applicant has requested, it's not a waiver, it's simply an action council can take up, and then in that case, the planning commission is asked to make a recommendation. So let's, I'd like to ask, the first question, in terms of preliminary plan, does anyone, would anyone like to frame a motion on that matter so that we can discuss it? Or would anyone like to make a recommendation about how we should proceed?
Is there any discussion about any of these things?
Pardon me?
I would ask you if there's any discussion among members of the planning commission about any of these topics?
Yeah, well, I would entertain that, but I'd like to sort of just have a motion on the floor, or at least a recommendation, like, you know, a motion to title this, a motion to approve it, a motion, whatever. I'd like to at least get that on the floor, and then we can discuss it before we vote.
All right.
I think I can make a motion to approve the preliminary plan.
Okay, so our second motion?
Second, okay.
So now we're having a discussion. It sounds like you would like to start it. Go ahead.
No, I have nothing to say.
Okay, you boxed us in the corner. Let's go around the table. Adam, do you have any discussion on this?
No.
Okay, do you have any discussion?
Just as far as the process, if we were to approve the preliminary plan tonight, and there was this property line, and it may move one way or the other, I assume that the new setbacks would have to be met somehow, that we're not approving, you know, we're not approving this property line. We don't have the means to approve a property line.
Yes, we do. The, we have, we have the information submitted to us by licensed engineer, licensed surveyor that verified that this is the property that we're being asked to act on. We can't simply not accept it if someone gets us an email that says maybe, you know, sometime a few years ago, someone had a question, and so maybe it's not right.
I'm just asking, I don't have a problem with the plan, but if the property line is later determined to be somewhere else, who has the burden to move these houses to reflect the new setback?
I would just say, that would be a factually different plan, so at that point, that would be a.
It would come back.
It would come back. So you're looking at a plan that's been approved, but it's been factored, and it should be.
Great.
It can always be a problem.
That sounds great. You're trying to block it, huh?
Any discussion, Dave, Jim?
It over? I'm sorry.
And do you have any comments you'd like to make?
I'm sorry, I do not have a comment. I was talking to somebody in the room here.
We're going around, you know you will always be the last person called.
No comment.
I would like to suggest that, in terms of preliminary plan, I would feel comfortable bringing it with, again, the condition that the will complies that you've suggested would be resolved to the satisfaction, it sounds like, of the borough engineer. I'm also interested in hearing the comments the street tree commission has on, that is one more step that has to be made. And also, with the condition that in the case of, the unlikely case that the house is damaged or rendered not usable in the moving process, that whatever repairs are made, or whatever house is created to replace this house, is reviewed by the HART for a certificate of appropriateness. Those would be the things I would be interested in seeing. I believe all those things would be agreeable to you? Is that correct? I mean, I think we've discussed those. The, I'm sorry, Fred, do you need a minute to talk to Summer? That's okay.
I'm sorry, were you asking?
I was saying that procedurally, I think it would be valuable for us to hear from the street tree commission, which we won't have heard from. But in terms of approving this as a preliminary plan, I would ask for the condition that all the will complies are addressed, that you already said that you would address, and that the, if the house is damaged or destroyed in the move, that any reconstruction or repair is done, is submitted to the HART for a certificate of appropriateness. I think those are things that we discussed, right?
They certainly seem to me to be reasonable conditions, and I think acceptable to our client, based on my discussions, both before this meeting and at this meeting. If I could, and I have it, I just wanted to read to you the language, it's very short, from the code. It says, "A plan showing all the information required for a final plan, which has been submitted as a preliminary plan and for which no changes have been required by the borough, may be approved as a final plan." So this is a permissive provision in the code, and I have had some discussion with Mr. Walker, our solicitor, on this. And to the extent that we would be making that request from borough council, because they're the ones that would actually need to approve that, it would be meaningful to borough council, obviously, to have the recommendation from this planning commission. So we're asking you for that recommendation. Now the question comes up, whether you're prepared to make that recommendation tonight, subject to the conditions that are acceptable, which would be our hope. But if for whatever reason you wanted to see something more before you were confident in making that recommendation, that it be considered as a final plan, without our having to come back through another process, I think it would be more sensible for us, for our client, to wait until you're comfortable making that recommendation, even if it needs another month, which we prefer that not have that other month, but rather than have a preliminary plan through this one, and then having to go through the process, which is a final plan process all over again, which requires that we file a final plan, and we get all the reviews, and then we come back, when in fact, I think, as Mr. Johnson said clearly, and Mr. Walker said, that their reviews are more or less final. Because even when the borough approves a final plan, it's always approved subject to conditions, and those conditions need to be met prior to the recordation of the final plan, and those conditions being met are ensured by the borough solicitor and by borough staff before the final plan is actually signed by the borough and released to the applicant for recording. So we think that the protections are there. We would hope that you would make that recommendation tonight, but we would really like to have that recommendation from you so that we don't have to go through a separate third final plan approval process, when we've really been through a lot of processes, you know, on this application, including the amendment process. So that's kind of where we stand, with the request that we made with regard to the certificate of appropriateness and the others that are acceptable.
Okay. I appreciate that. That's really the next question I was going to get at, if they're comfortable with a preliminary plan. It sounds to me like the planning commission is generally comfortable with recommending the approval of the preliminary plan. So I'd like to ask what people's thoughts are about what Mr. Fromholmes was offering. I should note also that the calendar of this application is such that there is, I believe, until mid-November or late November at some point is the end of the block, so that's correct, I believe. I reviewed the calendar I got from the borough office, that the borough really needs to act on this application by the council's November meeting. So one option we have is, as Mr. Fromholmes suggested, is wait one more month to see if there's any more resolution of the things that are still hanging. So that's another consideration we have. So Mr. Fromholmes asked, do we consider whether we're, it sounds again, like we're generally comfortable with a preliminary plan recommendation. How comfortable are you with the final plan recommendation at this point? Or what would concern you about that at this point?
I'm totally comfortable.
Okay, other?
I think that, I think our consultants have all said that their letters of review wouldn't change were there to be another month of time on this matter, and I think we have exhausted the subject on ourselves, and it's time to say we're done.
And it would be subject to compliance with.
Sure.
All the requirements that were outlined.
The other, Adam, Jim, Dave, how do you feel about?
I agree.
I agree. Jim, do you have any?
It sounds reasonable, yeah.
Okay. Jen?
I agree. Absolutely.
Okay, Eric, do you see any reason? I mean, you've said that we believe all the considerations are minor at this point.
Correct, I mean, I believe our comments are down to, for technical specifications, you know, ironing out the stormwater port, make sure we have the properties replaced, and. and, um, but no, and combine that with, I believe Kevin also had the same opinion, uh, through a lot of the zoning, uh, that everything could just be worked out. The normal comments that are left are what's left if you approve a plan anyway, and we just work through the details.
Um, may I ask, Mr. Fromholme, are you planning to make presentation to council anytime this month?
Uh, we are, and there are meetings this month, yes.
Okay. I don't think you'll have seen the street, well, they meet this Thursday, right? And then they meet two Thursdays, three Thursdays for them, correct? Um, but you don't yet know when the street tree commission will be meeting, because obviously they want that.
Yeah, we, we don't, and, uh...
It's next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday?
Did we have a date from them?
Yep.
No date, just a next week. Yeah. We don't have a date, I think, at the end of the space shows, that we would have the meeting with them before council, but all will be voted on.
Okay. So give them the sense of my fellow commissioners here, I, there is one other thing I'm interested in hearing more about, but because it's not anything that comes under our purview in terms of compliance, it's not fair to hold you up for that, but that is, um, further thinking about green building and about landscaping. And, um, I might ask if you would be agreeable to including, um, further discussion of that, further valuation of that in your presentations to council. Instead of coming back here, I mean, I would ask, like, come back next month and tell us about that, but we don't really have purview over that, so it's not...
We will do that.
It's okay. So I, I, it's, the, the, um, if I may kind of summarize, it sounds like the planning commission is prepared to, um, recommend both preliminary and final plan approval of this application, um, subject to, um, um, the applicant's demonstration of compliance with the will comply items on the engineer, uh, and the landscape review letters, um, that the applicant accepted the condition that if there is any, uh, damage to the house, um, uh, in the move, that any reconstruction of the house would be subject to certificate appropriateness from the HARB, and that the applicant will, uh, report to Borough Council in its presentation on its evaluation of, um, green building practices and native landscape plantings, uh, on the site, to the Borough Council's satisfaction. Um, I believe that summarizes our discussion. Did I leave anything out? Okay. Um, I will then, uh, are those friendly amendments to whoever made that motion? Did you make that motion? Were you second?
I, I made it.
Summarized the motion? Okay. So all in favor of that recommendation?
Aye.
All right. Uh, Jen? Okay. Any oppose that recommendation? Okay. The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you for tonight and for all you've done up to now.
Thank you for your efforts, too. We do appreciate you sticking with us. Okay. I would like to ask for two, three minute recess. That can be ready?
Yes.
Sounds great.
Okay. So we're gonna take a two, three minute recess.
There we go. Okay, we're unmuted.
Okay, folks, we're gonna re-adjourn the, uh, the debate. They are live and on memorance.
Jen, you can hear us, right?
Oh.
Say now we're muted.
Okay, so we, we'll move on to the other items of business tonight, which are, um, zoning amendments. We have three types of amendments or categories that we're moving forward, um, technical amendments related to the SALDO, um, proposed, uh, green building bonus, and, uh, some small amendments for historic properties in the 5B district. Before we do that, I'd like to, um, let the table, the agenda item of the SALDO update. Um, so Chloe, could you let us know where that process is?
Yes, thanks. Um, since last we talked about the SALDO, I've worked primarily with Kevin on a bunch of issues related to definitions. Well, then back up. There were some comments related to the tentative sketch plan, um, phase, and I did rewrite that section to address, I think, the concerns that were raised, or the, the discussion, to reflect the discussion we had last time. So I don't know if you had a chance to review that. I don't think there's really anything to discuss. There was nothing that different that I put in there as reflects our discussion from last time. So comments welcome, but that happened first. And then, since then, I worked with Kevin on some details related to the definitions and following conversations I had with him, sort of dove into the use of certain words in, throughout the zoning ordinance, because if we're gonna adjust the way a term is defined, we have to sort of look through all of the places that's used in the ordinance and how that works. Um, so that, this is tying the SALDO update with the related zoning updates, and I will say that it does include, in terms of definitions, some issues that are really outside of the SALDO, but were raised in other ways about the zoning ordinance, um, like the issue of, uh, the distance, the set, the, whether the frontage line is at the required setback distance, or whether the frontage line is at the existing setback distance, if you're talking about an existing property, which may be non-conforming in terms of its front setback. Anyway, we tried to address that in this, as we're revising the definitions and trying to make the definitions consistent between zoning and SALDO. So that's kind of the main thing I've been working on, and I've worked with Kevin on that in the last month. So, um, I think in terms of the SALDO, once I made all those revisions, I sent it to Samantha, who's authorized the borough solicitor, to go ahead and conduct a full review for any legal issues. Um, and then the main thing I wanted to talk with you about tonight is zoning-related amendments that would ideally accompany the SALDO adoption on a similar, but not identical timeframe for several reasons, uh, but to, to go, to go with that. Um, so I did, I think Todd distributed...
So before you talk about the zoning amendments per se, what is the anticipated timeline for the SALDO approval?
Um, I believe the process is, and this isn't really an answer to your question, is that the solicitor will review the SALDO and provide me probably with any comments, which will take some amount of time to address or not. And then the SALDO will be submitted to MCPC for a formal review letter, which is required by the municipality's planning coordinator of the state of Pennsylvania. And then it would come for, come here again for an official vote to send it on for adoption to council, and then council would vote from there to advertise the ordinance and that it would be adopted. And the caveat is that I'm not sure exactly how long any of those steps would take, other than the MCPC review has a limit of 30 days. Um, and that the other caveat, which would be is that Samantha's kind of orchestrating the process and it's kind of her sending things places. So how long will that take? A few months?
Okay. But the next step is for you to send something to the solicitor for legal review.
I believe that has happened, the, the SALDO piece of it. I think that these zoning revisions need to go to, but...
Yeah, I was just asking about the SALDO.
The SALDO, yes.
So the solicitor has, uh, has the SALDO now, and is going to take your legal review. You'll make final cleanups. It will go to MCPC for its review and then come back to us one more time in preparation for advertising.
Correct, that's my understanding.
And once it's advertised, it does not need to be reviewed by MCPC, because you've already reviewed it. And the borough's kind of trying to do this to speed up, to not get into a loop where changes are required after re-advertising.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so that's tracked, so we're not really gonna talk about the SALDO now, um, and we will see it one more time, but only after it's been fully vetted and nailed down in terms of the ordinance writing, um, by Chloe, the solicitor. Okay, so before you speak about the zoning amendments, um, in general, we'll ask you about the schedule for these, but we have three groups of zoning amendments, as I described, and, um, which will, I think Samantha will decide the tracks, they're gonna move on. Um, um, but the green building and the, and the zoning proposals for apartment buildings in 5B districts, um, are certainly on the fastest track of highest priority, and the SALDO would come along if, if it made sense. So we really, this, this group of things is the next set of zoning revisions. All right. So, which is why we're pressing each month the review. So Chloe, um, I will then ask you, so we all have received, several weeks ago, I believe, a, a document in our borough to propose zoning amendments to accompany the adoption of the new SALDO fall 2022. Um, Chloe, can you walk us through what we have here and what you are asking us for tonight?
Yes, and are you comfortable with me sharing this on them?
Yes.
It's not, for anyone watching from whom this is not final, this is really the first time this is being reviewed by the planning commission, so, uh, yeah, not ready for prime time here. Um, okay, so this is in order by the zoning ordinance rather than in order by importance or relevance to the SALDO. So the first change you see is just, um, related to cleaning up language around corner lots, and that was, um, a string of definitions led us to this, uh, location, but we're using the term corner lot, which is a defined term there instead of at the corners of blocks with at least two frontages, because corner lot is, is, is something that's used throughout the ordinance. Okay, and then there's this session, this whole section about having more than one principal use on a lot in the 5A and 5B district, principal building, more than one principal building by conditional use. So this, this is not proposed to change, and then there's a requirement, it references the requirement for a master plan to be submitted, and the language had said that the, an application for a master plan shall contain all requirements for a tentative sketch plan, changing that to preliminary plan, since the tentative sketch plan basically says that everything's optional more or less. Um, and there's this issue with the term elevation, we're using the term architectural elevations for a graphic depiction of the front of a building, um, so that's just a change of that. This second paragraph here, that's labeled paragraph B, under number two, I, I was trying to figure out if this needed to be changed or not, and I, um, I wasn't sure exactly what the intention of this paragraph was or what needs to happen here. So I'll just read it, it's real quick. "A master plan is submitted showing multiple principal buildings to be constructed in phases under the master plan. Exterior architectural renderings, architectural elevations, and exterior building material descriptions of the structures to be constructed pursuant to a master plan shall only be required to be submitted with a preliminary plan when such, such structures will be approved concurrently with a preliminary plan submitted." So, um, maybe we could, exactly! Maybe we could clear that up a little bit. If anyone is clear on what the intention of this paragraph is, I'd be happy to draft some revised language, but, um, I couldn't quite tell, so...
What's, what's that under? What section is that under?
This is, it's 504, uh, but it's related specifically to multiple principal buildings on a lot in the 5A or 5B district. And that's only permitted by conditional use and requires this master plan submission.
Uh, this is written, this is, I'm almost certain this is language drafted, um, by the solicitor, but the intention here is that, um, you know, a master plan, uh, outlines the zoning for several buildings on a lot, but those buildings may not be built at the same time, so they may not all be part of the preliminary plan submission. And so what this is saying is, you are required to show building elevations, designs, and materials if you're building the building at the time of preliminary plan. If you're building in the future, um, it would, I believe what it means to say is, is you're not required to show those, because you might simply just be filing for a building permit at that point, you don't have to come back to the planning commission. Now, we may not agree with it, but that's what that is meant to say.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
It means, you know, only, you only submit those with a preliminary plan when the preliminary plan actually includes those buildings. If a preliminary plan doesn't include those buildings, you don't submit those.
You don't have to submit all those details.
You don't have to submit drawings of buildings you're not gonna actually build right now.
Why don't they just say that?
I mean, I can, I can take a stab at a revision, which might just involve, um, breaking this into two sentences without a lot of changes. It just gets so many clauses, it gets a little confusing, um, if that's sort of what we're wanting it to say. And, and then the question is, you know, we've changed the requirements for tentative sketch plan, preliminary plan, final plan. I mean, preliminary plan's not that different, so it's probably fine, since it only references the preliminary plan phase in this paragraph, so... Okay, so I'll just try to maybe propose an... Okay, so I'll just try to maybe propose an edit to this that clarifies that when a building is proposed for construction as part of a land development plan, it requires the submission of a preliminary plan, then these things shall be included in the submission. But if it's not, that building is not proposed to be constructed at that time, those aren't required. So there's this issue that I identified with the word frontage, frontages and frontage types. So the word frontage is defined basically like a front yard. It's the area between the curb and the building. That's the exact definition. Frontage, the area between.
If everyone who's online, please communicate yourself or I will ask you to leave the meeting. I'm not sure, but can you meet the people who are online?
That might have just taken care of it. So the existing definition is for frontage is the area between the building facade and vehicular lanes inclusive of those built and planted components. We're proposing a slight adjustment to that language, but the important thing is that the word frontage as it currently is defined in the ordinance and as we continue to propose to define it, basically means front yard. But the word frontage is used in that way, in many ways, in the ordinance. But sometimes it's also used to mean the front of the building. So frontage types is defined differently, and that's fine. I don't think that's a problem. Talks about, you know, porch or portico or wraparound porch, et cetera. Those are different frontage types. But then you get the word just frontages, like this one. All frontages shall remain open and transparent. Is that talking about the front yard? Or is it talking about the front of the building? And what does it mean that also, I have that issue also with this one in particular. But and then I just propose a couple of changes below that. You can see if the zoning code had said a courtyard frontage in the 5A district, yada, yada. And just proposed to add the word type to clarify that because the frontage as defined means essentially front yard. So a courtyard frontage type clarifies that you're talking about what the front of the building is like or not. The area between. Well, that's another option is to change, to let frontage mean the front of the building and call the other thing a front yard.
Yeah, Chloe, I'm going to have to ask. We have a long list of things like definitions of frontages and frontage types and yards. And I don't think we have time to get to that tonight.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I don't feel like, I mean, these are errors that need to be corrected, but they're not really, I don't know. I feel like they're not, I just know we've, it's getting a long time. We have a lot to go to.
Yeah, that's fine. So I will say this, which is that I went ahead and made a decision about how to correct these. And this is marked up in that way. And I'm very open to feedback on, oh, well, let's do it this way instead. Or let's change this in a different way. Or this new definition, the way that you and Kevin have revised, it doesn't work. But, you know, let me know in some way. We don't, going through every single thing in a meeting like this does take a fair amount of time. So I'm happy to have feedback other ways or if you're comfortable with the way that I've drafted these revisions, that's fine too. And let me know what you think the best next step is.
Okay, so I would urge you, the things in red here are things that Chloe is going to propose as amendments. So if you want to try to sort them out, please consider that homework assignment. Because we can't churn through all these in every facet of them in the meeting. So, okay, what else is relevant? I mean, I think the idea here is just to make the zoning code consistent with SALDO when there's a conflict between the two. So what else is here? There's, can you walk us through the other corrections that you find?
So there's a few things related to the frontage issue that I've made suggestions about. There's an error in the code reference. I referenced the section that doesn't exist. Let's just correct that. The issues related to streets and sidewalks and planting strips all basically just refer to SALDO, other than, you know, maintenance of vegetation. We, you know, we've discussed previously about the minimum lights, et cetera. That's all now in the SALDO. It's just, so a number of the definitions, like I said, are not really related to the SALDO per se. It's just issues that come up with trying to make them consistent and resolving other issues with the zoning code. I've just got this already. So I don't know if you want me to go through. There's a number of definitions that I had proposed for the SALDO that are not contained in the zoning ordinance, like for example, comprehensive plan. It's pretty obvious, but it's common to have a definition of that. There's other changes or new definitions. And, you know, the topic of interest to all of you is bicycle parking, which we could have probably a long conversation about that if we wanted to have revisions that we could discuss or I can send them for next time.
We talked last time about bicycle parking. That was your recommendation.
Correct. It's a mix of zoning and SALDO, but the minimum parking requirements go in zoning. And the SALDOs would be more design requirements. There was some talk of maybe there would be a group of people that wanted to work with me on this on the side. Maybe Jim Spear was volunteered by somebody.
Jim, you did provide some input on that, right? Like to, I thought we did provide some.
Yeah, a couple, a couple of topics.
But didn't we provide some input on appropriate standards for how many like parking spots?
Yep.
Okay, did you? I think, and who did you consult with? You consulted with some people? Was Chloe on that meeting? Can't remember.
Did we do that? Couldn't hear.
This afternoon, I met with Kimberly Engini from the Cyclone Club. Fred Bush was there. Chloe, you're copying on this. Consensus is we should ask for two bicycle parking spots for a living unit for any residential development, three units or more. Do not tie bike spaces to parking spaces.
Okay, I did see that. I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about.
So in terms of quantities, I mean, that's, I think, probably what you could.
And we did talk about this last month. I think Adam suggested we also have a minimum of, what was it, two, two per unit? Yeah. Did we talk about this last week?
When we talked about it, the minimum of, say, two per unit and one per bedroom.
Yeah.
To the one with one.
I think that was subsequent to that email you just read.
The email I read was, yeah, before our planning commission meeting. So I guess, Chloe, in terms of the number of bike parking spots, you can refer to our minutes while we're meeting.
Okay, so you'd like to include both a minimum number per unit and a minimum number per bedroom. And they have to do the greater of the two, essentially. Is that the idea? Okay.
That would be in the zoning code. So that could be in these proposed zoning amendments.
Yes, there's a number of, you know, I, my understanding from previous conversations is that you do also want to require bicycle parking for non-residential uses. I've looked at some examples, drafted some numbers. And if there's someone that wants to talk with me about this, fine. And if there's other related standards. I do have a couple of sort of content questions. There are some ordinances in other places that offer additional parking, vehicle parking reductions once you get to a certain amount of bicycle parking. I don't know if you want to consider that.
I don't think at this point.
Okay, we can just save that as.
We may want to consider that, but I don't feel, I mean, right now, we're just trying to not reinvent policies, just plug holes, I think.
Is there, you know, is there someone from this group or someone else I should consult with with the latest draft for the bicycle parking language?
Can I volunteer?
And that's it for me.
Okay, so we have, just for your reference, folks, a ton of new definitions in the SALDO, in the zoning code here under terms defined, which I think is sort of interesting to see what we were missing in the past and some what we're adding here. And then a few tweaking of current definitions. A lot of them, as Chloe said, revolving around frontage law. And I agree, it's an area that needs a lot of work. So I would say the best thing for everyone to do is just to read that over and see if you've got questions about that particular language before we spend any time discussing.
Is this in the document we were just looking at?
It's in this document that was emailed on.
If there's anything that you don't have or that you're looking for, don't spend a lot of time, just shoot me an email and I'll send it to you. Don't have to go searching through your messages if you don't find it.
Again, the purpose of this is really to avoid conflicts between the SALDO and the zoning. And in a few small cases to fill gaps, like we don't have bicycle parking standards and everyone wants them. Okay, and so that track is, the track, the timing track for that is not yet determined, I guess, Chloe, because somehow it would have to be done somewhat concurrently with the SALDO.
Ideally, it would be close in time to the SALDO because it's not great to have inconsistencies between the two documents.
Okay, so the other two, not to cut things off too much, but is there, are there any other pressing comments about the SALDO-related zoning? So the other two topics on the table, which we are trying to navigate more quickly, are green building bonus and short-term zoning proposals related to apartment buildings in 5B districts, related to short-term rentals, and related to cleaning up language about mixed-use buildings. I'll start with the short-term zoning proposals. We did discuss these and I believe that the comments folks made have incorporated into this draft. I just want to make sure there's nothing people feel is out of place. In terms of apartment buildings in 5B districts, the primary feedback received, there were two bits of primary feedback. One was concern that existing contributing resources, we were concerned that they might be converted to apartment buildings resulting in a loss in commercial activity on Montgomery Avenue. And so that was expressed here. It was also expressed by council or by Fred Bush, who was attending the meeting. And so this has been revised to clarify that the building that's now a contributing resource may not be contributed, converted to an apartment building use. So that means an office building couldn't be converted to an apartment building, because that is what the feedback was that we were seeing.
Well, could that be rewritten that way? Because that, when I saw that, I was like, what? It didn't make a whole lot of sense to me. I mean, can you just say an existing commercial building?
Would have to be an existing mixed-use.
Or a mixed-use building, which is a contributing resource, may not be converted to a whole apartment.
What apartment building is wholly?
All right.
By definition, it's just residential.
Okay, but yeah, can you just add a contributing, an existing commercial or mixed-use building as a contributing resource? Because otherwise it's.
Okay, that's fine.
It's not clear.
And then the second feedback we received was requesting a setback of a fourth story of a building like this, if it's a new construction building. So that is, technically, it needs to be written into a separate section of the zoning code because of the way the code is organized. But that's what this add 5041X is. It's basically a design criteria for an apartment building in the 5B district that says that the building massive needs, the fourth story needs to set back one foot for each two feet of height above 35 feet, which I believe is the standard right now along Windsor Avenue. So that, address that comment. Otherwise, it's what we proposed last time is just updating with those comments. So that if apartment building is built, the fourth story needs to be set back.
Only the portion of the building above 35 feet would be stepped back?
Right, the fourth story, yeah.
But if someone is only going three stories, just 45 feet, they don't have to set any portion of it back?
Actually, no, it doesn't say the fourth story. It just says anything above 35 feet sets back.
Well, it doesn't really, it's the last sentence here. Saying that, it doesn't say what part of the building has to be stepped back.
Okay, so the facade shall set back?
Any portion of the facade above 35 feet. It says how much it has to be stepped back relative to the 35-foot in height, but not what portion of the building. Just to clarify.
We can do. Okay. So that incorporates the comments that we received on that map. And those corrections can be due. So will be brought back in form, final form, to be voted on and then, I guess, sent to MCPC for its review. Maybe the next guy. The next section, short-term rentals, is really a simplification of our conversation as reported in our minutes. This is what we agreed to. I just want to make sure that it reflects what you believe we agreed to, since we approved the minutes, hopefully it does. This is a request, by the way, by the borough staff to update this part of the code to assist them in their enforcement efforts against short-term rentals, Airbnb's. So that's what has precipitated this and why it is urgent. So again, any dwelling unit used or otherwise available for rental leasing or subleasing for being marketed that way for a period of 29 days or less, that is a short-term rental. Short-term rentals should not be permitted anywhere in any zoning district, except when the short-term rental consists of a separate bedroom that is in a dwelling unit that's occupied by the owner or lesser living room. So we're actually going to allow it unless the owner's there. Now, a question was raised to me when I was discussing this with the solicitor. He said, do you want to restrict this to any particular zoning districts? Or right now, this would allow a rental in any zoning district if the owner, if there's an owner occupied or a tenant occupied building. He said, is that, are you certain?
Owner occupied or tenant occupied?
Right, so if I'm renting a house, if that'd be a year-long lease or two-year lease for a house, I can, I can offer whatever is a short-term rental as long as I am there.
You can sublease.
Well, yeah, a one-night sublease, yeah.
Does it use that language?
What's that?
Does it talk about sublease?
No, it does not use that because I'm not sure it's technically a sublease.
Well, it is if it's under the primary less C. It has to be, otherwise it's with the landlord.
Well, it's whatever the landlord and the owner and.
Well, can the landlord rent out the house to multiple parties with different leases?
Can't we ever do that?
I don't know, can we?
Yes, a landlord can, I mean, we allow.
You can rent these bedrooms separately.
Yes, because we allow for up to like four unrelated individuals to be in our house. So conceivably, yes. That gets into one other matter about concrete housing and things like that.
It's not a sublease. What you're saying is at least one of the occupants has to have a long-term lease.
Right.
But then one other occupant could be on a Airbnb lease.
Yes. What we're saying is someone who has a regular lease, like an annual lease, has the same ability.
It's not a sublease, just to be clear. The issue is you could be renting a house, a bedroom of a house. And the landlord could be operating an Airbnb in the same house as you.
No. No, because... Okay, we don't want that to happen, right? So what we want, what we, what we, what we want is if you own a house and you live in a house, you can rent a room out as an Airbnb.
That's an owner-occupied house. So if an owner-occupied building, you as the owner could have a short-term lease for up to one bedroom.
Right, right. I'm trying to establish that that's something we've agreed to. So then the question is, do we also want a person who has a lease, like I have an annual lease in an apartment, to be able to have the same ability to rent out a room in their apartment as a sublease?
I don't think that sounds good.
So this should only be for an owner occupied?
Yeah. Personally.
Would your landlord allow?
Yeah, I mean, that's between landlord and...
Obviously, your landlord would have to allow. If the landlord doesn't allow, then you can't do it. We...
I don't know. Can you sublease without your landlord's permission?
That is not any of our business.
It's hard to allow, sure.
The matter, the only question is, do you want a person who has a leasehold, a legal leasehold, to be able to rent out one of their rooms as a Airbnb?
The goal here is to, the goal here is to make, to ensure adequate supervision of the property.
Yeah, and I think if you're a lesser, you're not taking care of the property as you would want to be.
If you're leasing a whole house, if there's something in your lease that says specifically that you cannot sublet to someone else, which, which is the controlling, the lease?
The lease.
So you don't have, so I don't have a legal right to rent someone out, a spare room in a house that I'm leasing?
Right. Yeah.
The other aspect of this, if I remember correctly, is the, it was the property owners who were coming to us and saying, "Why can't I rent out a room in my house?"
Right.
And I think that's, that's what's relevant. It's not about, you know, somebody leasing a house saying that.
Yeah, I think that's messy.
Sounds like there's, the direction here is to strike that. We only allow this to occur in owner-occupied.
I think so.
Where did this come from, that sound?
I heard it.
Oh, well, to be clear, you're completely, you know, sense the room owner. The issue is basically, is also just the issue of short-term occupancies, right? So the property owner who has investment property, they're leasing out, can lease all of the bedrooms for the zoning, whatever the zoning allows. The issue is just they're not allowed to lease it every night to somebody different.
Right. They can't lease it for less than 20...
It's not a hotel.
Right. Okay, so it sounds to me like, the sense of everyone is to tighten this up, so it's only permitted in owner-occupied.
Yes, yes.
But is that different than, just a question, being like a B and B that you live in? I mean, you could...
A B and B is a specific thing in our zoning code.
It is, oh, yes.
And it's only permitted...
It's a 5B?
It's only permitted in certain districts.
I've worked at various places. You have Airbnb, but it's more of like a hotel style, which is regulated under your ordinance. This is to stop people from coming into the residential neighborhoods for the short-term.
So we'll avoid any, allow, we'll avoid any language that allows renters to do this. It can only be, and you can have Airbnb in certain districts.
Yeah, I think it should be on that.
Okay, and then we also agreed short-term rentals should not require extra parking. That was not 100% consensus, I don't believe, but that was where we ran it. So that says, I will inform the solicitor that that one aspect of this should be tweaked. Okay, and then hopefully, I see, is Kevin still on the line? Kevin? Is that...
I'm still, I'm still here.
Does that satisfy your needs, Kevin?
Yeah, we just need to know the length of step, where we want them, and just a clear definition, so we're good. No, you know, however you guys figure that out, we're good with it.
Okay, well, I, we figured it out with this language. I want to make sure this language is what you need. So it's what we emailed around, except we're not going to allow people who are tenants to, to, to have short-term rentals.
Yeah, and I think that's much easier for me to enforce, too, than track down specific documents.
So this is limiting it to one room to, to lease, short-term lease? Or what if I have a floor of my house with just two bedrooms and a bathroom?
Very good question. Should we limit it to a certain number of rooms that you can?
Oh, yeah, separate, separate space, or, you know.
Just a question.
It could be several rooms.
It should be, a lot of B and Bs are suites.
Airbnb.
Okay, but I guess what, maybe the better way to phrase the question, should a property owner lives in their house, the house owner, suppose they have a three-story house and they only need one floor to live on, and they're going to rent the two out as Airbnbs? Is that okay, or would you only want them to allow one?
No, that's okay.
It's fine.
Why is it okay?
Why not?
Because of parking.
No, parking comes and goes, that's not a big thing.
I kind of think, I fell on Dave's side, actually. I'm not sure. I feel like that has too much, I mean, to do it once is sort of vague.
What does it matter? If the house accommodates that number of people, whether they have a short or long-term lease from the carrying capacity of the town, the issue here is about nuisances. I don't think the parking is the significant issue.
I don't like, I, you know, just generally, I'm not crazy about the idea of a commercial use of residential property, but I'm willing to go a little bit of the way there, but not too far. Sorry to...
Can I mention something? Could I suggest something in between, which is that you should be allowed one rental situation at a time, but not necessarily limited to one room? Like, you know, if I went into a family on one, that has, and I had two bedrooms and a bathroom on my third floor, or something like that?
That's a, that's a good, that's a...
Yeah, that's, that's good.
Not like multiple.
I don't know how you word it, but that's good.
Yeah, one rental unit.
I think that's reasonable.
Kevin, is that a first of all, to limit it to one rental, one short-term rental at a time?
I think that's much easier. I even think that's easier than breaking it down into floor levels or specific rooms.
Right, but as opposed to allowing people to have as many short-term rentals as they can cram in?
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
One rental agreement at a time.
And you know what? Airbnb even says it on their site, they say one unit.
Right, okay. So if it was like an ADU, it's one rental. If it's a, if it's a bedroom, do they allow bedrooms?
Yeah, you can.
So if you would say only...
But it's still one unit. It just described differently.
It's a shared unit, but that's right. It's one, it's one rental contract, essentially.
One rental at a time, yeah. Whether it's one room, two rooms, a bedroom, it's me, or perhaps it's one at a time.
And I do think one rental unit is a proper language.
Okay. Well, we'll take that intention to the solicitor. Okay, thank you for asking those questions. I'll let the solicitor know we refined our recommendation. The last language here, I don't think there's actually anything new, we're simply, the mixed-use buildings, we're trying to clarify that mixing can be vertical. Chloe, this is actually a change in the language that you proposed.
Okay.
But the, it's really, it's Chloe for you to review rather than the planning commission, because nothing, the intent hasn't changed, it's just simply to allow only for the vertical use, mixing of mixed-use buildings, not for the horizontal mix of mixed-use buildings. And also to tie the mixing of uses to the language that we have in our code. So mixing of uses can't, technically, we have commercial and non-commercial uses in the code, and then each is broken into separate subcategories, right? And so I think what we mean by mixed-use, we don't mean stores and offices, we mean commercial and non-commercial, right? So mixed-use building.
What?
Right?
Do you want it to, well, this is a question for you. Do you want it to require a residential use to be considered mixed-use?
So if, if we did, then what would a building with retail on the ground floor and offices above be?
It's not mixed-use anymore.
Not to use this definition?
It's commercial.
A commercial building with multiple tenants?
Except the commercial building can only be one story.
It's the liquor store is the example of office over retail.
Okay, so I think we might need to refine this.
It would be a non-conforming building type.
So we might need to refine this to, all I want to do here is, I don't want to like create new policy, I just want to tie the idea of the use to what we have elsewhere in our code. We have metacategories, commercial and non-commercial, and then within each, we have subcategories.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense, to be clear about what counts as a mixed-use. I just, for, as a policy question, I'm not clear still, is it the sense of the group to want to require residential use for a mixed-use building?
I don't think so, because we have plenty of buildings with stores and offices above, right? Wouldn't that be okay?
So if a commercial building is allowed, it doesn't have to be mixed-use then?
Commercial building now in our code is defined only as a one-story building.
Well, what's a multi-story commercial building?
That's what we're realizing, there's an error here in the language, though.
Well, that's what Chloe's asking, she's saying, like, the liquor store is office over retail, it's not conforming, it's not a mixed-use building.
By this definition that I've proposed, so this definition I've proposed is wrong, it needs to be. The code says right now, a mixed-use building has a mix of uses, right? But the question is, what's the level of granularity? I mean, what do you refer to elsewhere in our code to understand that you're mixing uses? It's, it's like a, not a, not a specific enough reference.
It seems like...
We just need to tie it back to the use tables in our code.
The goal, it seems like actually the goal was to provide for retail on certain retail streets.
Right.
And to provide for multi-story buildings where it's presumed the upstairs wasn't retail.
Right.
The preference probably mostly towards residential, but we don't really, it doesn't sound like anyone's proposing to strictly require residential development.
Right.
And the upper floors. So really, what you want to do is specify in these zones, if you could, it must have a retail storefront.
Well, no, not necessarily. It, because in some, in some areas, like off of Haverford Avenue, we've learned that retail on the ground floor isn't really desirable, but professional offices might be, like on the ground floor in the apartments above.
On Haverford?
Not off Haverford.
You mean on the side streets?
Yes. That, right now, we're told retail isn't really viable there, or on Montgomery Avenue. You know, you may want retail, but you may want a lot more.
I think, I think you have to step back and you have to say, what is a mixed-use building? A mixed-use building is a mix of anything. It's residential, commercial, retail, institutional, it could be, mixed-use simply means it's mixed-use. If you want to stipulate what kinds of mixed-use we want in different areas, that's where the zones come in.
Sometimes you want to do that, but in terms of defining mixed-use?
It's anything.
Well, I guess all I'm asking is, we need to tie it back to the actual language in our use tables in our code.
And what, how do we define mixed-use in our code?
It's not...
It's not.
That's why you're doing, that's why there's an issue.
No, but I guess what you're, a mix of uses would be two or more uses from the code.
But the problem is, we have uses, it's like a hierarchy, like...
There's, there's two categories. There's residential uses and non-residential uses, and then within that, there's, there's only one sort of subcategory in residential, and then there's three smaller, there's like three levels, right? Within non-residential, though, there's office and professional service, retail and light industry, other, automotive, civic, and institutional, so are those the ones, are the other ones? But I, my question is, what do you want it to be? Like, what, what do you want a mixed-use building to be? Whether, whatever we think we should interpret how it's currently written or whatever, like, do you want it to include a certain amount of customer-facing use on the first floor, like office, professional services, personal services, or retail?
Chloe, I think that's a little too detailed.
Yeah.
Because that's more of a zoning district question.
Yeah, that's true, and I do understand, I just, to write the right definition, it's good to have an understanding of what the goal is, like, what's your vision for this? But I think you're just saying, let's just clarify that it has to be at least two different of these sort of second-level categories.
That's all I'm asking, is like, if we're going to say we have to mix uses, we need to be able to refer to that table and say what uses get to be mixed.
Can I say just the bold ones?
The bold one is residential, not commercial, right?
No, those are the, those are the biggest headings. Residential, there are, commercial and not commercial are not, no, those words are not used in this table at all, so I think those are no good. The residential and non-residential, and then the next category down is office and professional service, retail and light industry, other, automotive, civic, institutional, and residential. So that's the category I think we want.
What number is the table?
Table three. Oh, table one, it's, they're all the same, the first...
So we don't say all uses but residential? You can pick any uses, excuse me, except automotive. I don't think we want automotive uses, mixed-use probably. But just, they have to combine, and we could list the ones you listed, like, there's four or five different types, civic, institutional, residential, commercial, just mix at least two of those uses and you've got it.
It might be fair to really just list them.
But see, commercial includes retail and office, and we would want, that, that's okay, that's the thing, the...
Right, so you're saying that having retail on the first floor and office above counts as a mixed-use building and it should be fine, and we should just make that clear in the code?
In general, yeah.
Great, that's fine.
It could also include the commercial and retail, and residential.
Right.
We could include institutional and residential, we could include retail and institutional above. It's just that we need to be able to refer to that list and say, when you're combining your mixed uses, here's the figures you picked from.
Right, it has to be at least two of the following things, and then list them clear.
Okay.
Okay, how about I take the next stab at that definition, I'll send it to you.
Okay, I'm not trying to write the rules to reinvent what it means, I'm just trying to link it.
Right.
So someone can read this and go back to table, whatever, and say, "Okay, using things like this." And then the zoning districts can be more specific. Haverford Avenue, Winter Avenue, the crossroads. Okay, so that's what these things are, so we will take another crack at them, but I think we're pretty much in agreement if we get the wording right on these topics. Is that your sense of things? Okay, so last, let's try and tackle the green building, if you don't mind. This has come a long way since you saw it last, and it still has a ways to go. The, what has happened since you've seen this last, I believe, is that we have recrafted it to break the building requirements, the green building requirements into three categories. Then nothing has changed in terms of what the benefits would be, but the actual requirements have been broken into three categories, and we're working very hard with the borough staff to make this enforceable and administrable, and there's still some distance to go. The three requirements are carbon reduction in construction, energy efficiency, and carbon reduction in operations. Column three, carbon reduction in operations would apply to ADUs, cottages, detached house and twins, and all three columns would apply to multiple-family buildings, apartment buildings, and mixed-use buildings. These, the columns each have a list of standards. I will say, I think we feel we're pretty close in column one, column two, and column three, in terms of having standards that are feasible, measurable, enforceable, based on our conversations with the staff and with the solicitor last week, and with John from MCPC there, Gary was there, and Kevin, Kevin too. We're not quite as close with carbon reduction in construction, but what we are, you know, the, the guidance of the Environmental Advisory Council is the most important thing, is to reduce the use of fossil fuels when a building is operated. One council member told us, "If you can eliminate fossil fuel hookups, I'd be happy." That's the top level. And so carbon reduction in construction, while desirable, I don't think is the highest of priorities, and so what we've done is, we actually pulled this list here that you see in column one from documentation from the AIA. And what we are proposing is we let the applicants propose a plan for how they will meet these criteria, and as long as they meet the plan that has been approved, that they will meet this criteria. Now, I have gotten in some phone calls, some hurts, I hear general, you know, agreement that these are workable, I have heard some concern about the building products, the third and fourth, use of building materials that are, you know, from close to the project site, and the, and limiting the use of carbon-intensive materials. I still am hearing concern that that might be hard to, for small projects, to actually document and manage, so I think we have a little more work to do on that. But again, we're not, we're trying very hard to kind of put out metrics that are, require a lot of extra effort to verify, in this particular case. What we are... What we are going to do, after we get your feedback tonight, is directly take this to some of the people who will be developing and building in town to get their feedback, one or two, before we finalize it for presentation to council. We want it to be fair to get some input from others as well. The other thing is, the last page outlines the special exception related to green infrastructure. You'll recall, we discussed this, and there was a question whether we should simply exempt solar panels at all from our roof regulations, since we know that they would almost always get a special exception. We discussed this with council, and council was uncomfortable with that. Council wanted solar panels to receive the special exception not to be totally, you know, approved, no matter what, how they related to our roof requirements. So this is pretty much the special exception process you saw last time. And this has really been based on your feedback last time and council's feedback when I presented it to them. So this is where we are. I think there's, you know, general, strong support in council, general support in the community. The few developers I've talked to who might actually use these rules are generally supportive of these rules, are willing to work with them. They might want to talk about tweaking certain aspects of them before they become code. So I think we're really close.
I think it would be really helpful to have some input from professionals who know this stuff.
Jen is leading this charge.
Well.
She's a professional who knows this stuff.
Okay.
Okay, I think now I have to chime in.
You're also three other professionals here too. That's why we're bringing it to you guys.
Heidi, no, I agree with you. I think that, you know, talking to as many people as possible. We talked to John Lesher from Montgomery County Planning. He is working at the regional level to implement some of these ideas. He seemed very impressed that we were able to, out of the gate, have the support of council. But that's just at the, you know, in the big picture. In the smaller picture, in terms of enumerating each of these points as measurable and enforceable, you know, I agree with Todd, except I sort of disagree with him on reducing carbon in construction. My take from our discussion with the solicitor, with John Welko, you know, we came up with, and this is of course referring to numerous resources, including the AIA Design Excellence Manual. The, I know everybody, hold on to your seats here, the LEED Reference Manual, which really, I think, breaks down the various ways to achieve green building very well, though it is an onerous process. It's a lot of paperwork, it's time, it's money. No developer wants to wait longer than they have to. But getting back to the specifics, you know, in terms of measuring the carbon content of materials used on site, there are ways to do it. You know, LEED says, well, you know, if you, just start with the process of permitting in construction. The job goes out to bid, somebody gets, the GC gets the job. They start ordering supplies, the pay-ups come in. You can verify every material that's purchased. You can verify its content in the submittal. You can, all of those things can be verified. But, and so I guess the metric that we put on that was 20% of material would have to comply as being local or carbon-neutral or FSC-certified or, you know, any one of those totally commonplace ways of measuring the greenness of material. So that's the one, you know, maybe sticking point that I might disagree with a little bit. I do think that we are, you know, we have a pretty decent list of, and what Todd and I, what we talked about was having a menu. Look at this menu, and then maybe, the one thing we haven't really decided on is, how many boxes do they have to check before they get the bonus? You know? Oh, yeah. Right. I mean, yeah. So, anyway. But, you know, if I could, can I just have a couple of minutes to talk about the renewable energy part of this? Okay, thank you. I know council is very much on board with no new fossil fuels. And in a perfect world, no fossil fuels at all. Over the summer, with the help of Jim Speer, we organized, as just a group of concerned citizens here in Norbert, we organized a meeting to investigate some, you know, the feasibility of some large-scale renewable energy transition projects so that we can meet our 2030 goal of 100% renewable energy for electricity by 2030. So, so we talked about this microgrid concept, which was interesting, and it worked for Brooklyn, but ultimately, it wouldn't really work for Norbert. But what we did find with the help of Environmental Advisory Council was we found out about this community choice aggregation program, which would in fact default, you know, PICO would still be the distributor, but we would have a third-party supplier that would hook Norbert up with renewable energy. And all households would default to renewable energy. And anyone who didn't want to participate would have to opt out. So it makes it easier. And I just want to again emphasize, as I have pretty much all along, that I think the idea here is just to increase accessibility into reward participation.
Can I ask a quick question about this reference here? I think that's what you're talking about, the community choice program. I know that if and when this comes in for MCPC review, they're gonna say, don't put something in the ordinance that doesn't exist. I know it's worded now, like, when Norbert Community Choice Program is operational, must participate in community choice, and then the comment is gonna be, if that ever comes to be, you can add it to your ordinance. And don't reference something that's just an idea that is really inferior. It's a great idea, fully support. But, and that's a comment that you can take it or leave it, but just to mention that. And that there's some, John Lesher, who Jen just mentioned, Todd too, my colleague, said that there's some question about whether that's gonna be legal or not, and that he actually asked the county solicitor to look into it as well. So there's, hopefully it will all work out and be a really great program.
Did he? I mean, I can elaborate a little bit on the concern about legality in terms of the language that is used to describe what is happening. And Chloe, I'm guessing you probably know, but just to sort of fill in the gaps here. There is some legislation that states that in Pennsylvania, community solar is not allowed in townships and cities. But it doesn't say anything about boroughs. I don't have the language in front of me, but there is another piece of language or legislation or something that coins community choice aggregation for boroughs as, and this, I vetted this through Environmental Advisory Council, that says that, you know, there's, it is legal in boroughs to do that. So the idea was, you know, you meet a minimum threshold of 30,000 residences, which somehow has recently dropped to 15,000. But either way, so you break even, and it doesn't cost more. You know, when the transition happens, it's a seamless, smooth transition for people. I think that's, might be the language that John Lesher was referring to. We did talk about it a little bit. And I did go back to EAC and say, you know, there is some question about that. Can we clarify that further before we had the meeting with the solicitor? And I clarified it further. So I'll send, I can send you the, those little, those two pieces of language, and you can look at it and see what that means. But I understand what you're saying. We don't want to use speculative language referring to something that doesn't exist or that isn't in place.
Exactly.
But I think we have something there, sort of as backup, that says no fossil fuels or something like that.
Yeah. And also, the current, what's written right above that is acquire electricity from Pennsylvania State 100% renewable providers. And that's something people can do today, so that addresses.
And we do.
Right.
We've been doing that for almost 10 years.
Chloe, the reason for hanging it in there though, is, I mean, although it's not in place, it's not like a made-up idea. I mean, the borough is actually gonna propose in its budget next year to provide funding to provide incentives for people to do this. So it's not like it's just sort of something we made up because we read about it. The other reason is, because the borough is actively pursuing this, we would like to signal the people who take advantage of this bonus that they have to agree down the road. If this happened, part of the agreement is they will join us.
I see.
So this is actually part of what they're agreeing to.
Got it. So someone who's gonna develop now, even though this doesn't exist yet, they would have to sign an agreement at the time of the development that when it does exist, they will take part in it?
Yes.
Okay. That was helpful clarification. Thank you.
And that's important because, as Jen was saying, this only works if you get your numbers up to a certain number. So if you say, well, Norbert is locked in 100 units. That's, and if it's 15 grand, that's pretty good. Norbert brings that to the table. Norbert will be doing the same thing with residents in different, like, area by area. The borough offering them the opportunity to join, simply to prove that it has the numbers to do this. So part of it, it's like a playing butt down. It's like trying to justify the leadership, but also trying to get people signed up so we can demonstrate that we will help get to the numbers necessary.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
So I just have one comment. I mean, I think green building incentives are great, but do we really want to? What's the benefit to the borough to allow people to build bigger? I mean, this is all about building bigger. Do we really want that?
It's, this proposal would not allow anyone to build bigger than they would have prior to this being passed. So certain things will be reduced, and they have to do this to get back up to that level. The other area is, in on Haverford Avenue, we, for many years, allowed people to build three stories. Council reduced it to two stories. This would allow them to get back to three stories. And that was, quite frankly, always council's intention.
I know, but is that, I mean, that, so that is one particular area that I think the planning commission really needs to weigh in on, the Haverford Avenue part. And I know that project's coming up, and I'm so opposed to raising those buildings higher than two stories. So I'm sure I'm not the only one.
Could that be a candidate to step back the third story on Haverford Avenue?
That's a possibility.
Possibly, yeah.
And that would certainly help, but.
Yeah. I mean, possibly. I mean, when that comes along.
That is a concept.
I mean, there's a push for this, and I just don't understand it at all. To make Haverford Avenue grow. I think people should wait until they see what happens at the old gas station site in Brooklyn. And we've already got, we're getting maxed out.
Well, it's, so first of all, you know, you can land wherever you'd like on how much is appropriate for Haverford Avenue. But this would not allow more than was allowed two years ago.
Well, no, there's two, it's two stories right now on Haverford.
Two years ago, two and a half years ago, or three stories.
Well, yeah, thank goodness that has changed. I mean, that's my gut feeling about it. So, I mean, I'm just looking at this and going, ugh, you know, green building incentives. Well, is there another incentive for years instead of like maxing out the borough? I don't know. Anyway.
Are there other, so I guess the question really is, I mean, those are things we'll have to debate when we, when we finally make a recommendation to council. But as we're working towards this, are there other things you feel need to be honed to make this work? If you would like to see it work?
Heidi, can I address Heidi's comment just briefly? EAC expressed the same concern about density, which, you know, adding vertical height to a building, you know, it adds, it adds a little. But can we talk about affordability? This is a little outside my area of expertise. But affordability, if we're working on green building now, affordability is next. And one way, and correct me if I'm wrong, to try to curtail, you know, the rising prices of space is make more space available.
It hasn't worked. It hasn't worked yet. None of those properties that are getting developed are low-income or middle-income houses. They're all way up there. So that, if we're addressing that, that's simultaneously.
Can I add some things to this?
Yeah.
You know, we're running out of time here.
Yeah.
But I haven't said hardly anything all night. But, look, I'm not advocating in favor of demolishing anything or saying a particular building needs to be bigger. But I do want to emphasize that, you know, Danny's Guitar Shop is in a three-story building. The Cheese Stop, Cheese Shop is a three-story building. The town is full of three-story buildings. If we don't want density, are we gonna take off the third floor of these buildings? Or can we move here because we like the town the way it is, with its walkable feel? So I think the key issue is walkability or the character, not necessarily two or three stories. In terms of affordability, it is supply and demand, pure and simple. Does the borough have the ability to create enough supply to keep up with demand? Possibly not. You know, but we can only do what we can do. I think we had at least, hopefully, a tiny bit of success with the previous project tonight, where at least by keeping the cottages more reasonable size, they are not going to be over a million dollars like most reasonably built in my street. Okay. And then, so there's supply and demand, and then there's unit type. I don't know that the city of Philadelphia is gonna be all that great in leading this either, but they did just, you know, in the West Philadelphia area, do a zoning overlay for the whole councilmatic district, where projects that provide over 10 or more residential units must set aside 20% of the units to be, I hope, I think it's permanently affordable. So if you have a larger project, then you can carve off potentially some of the units to meet an affordability standard. Again, I'm not saying that this is a fantasy or a work, but it is an approach. But it only works if we're supplying the market with new houses, because that's the only way to regulate creating permanent affordable houses under that strategy. Those are the points I wanted to make.
Before we adjourn, any comments from either of you?
Yeah. Well, my overriding comment would be, this would be a much easier discussion for me if it was two hours earlier. I think to start this discussion at 10 o'clock is a deal breaker for me, frankly. I have a lot to say about this, but not at 10 o'clock at night.
Can I ask, hopefully, a quick question, but nothing to do with anything we've been talking about. Would the banning of burning fossil fuels, would that include burning of wood? And like, you know, in a fireplace, heat a house with wood, and why or why not?
The definition.
I know, it's not a fossil fuel. I know, it's not, I know it's not a fossil fuel.
It's not a fossil fuel.
It's not carbon, you know, it's carbon intensive.
It's not coal. It's not coal.
But it is polluting.
Yeah.
It's actually, the bigger issue with fireplace is probably particulars. Not, I mean, yes, there's carbon, but to your point, like, you know, it's accelerating the carbon slightly, but not, I mean, somebody else should comment on this. But is it, how many houses are being heated with, you know, wood pallets versus, or firewood versus just people having a symbolic fire? And is that specifically meaningful?
You know, I think it's a matter of a percentage of, what is the percentage of embodied carbon? I don't, I don't have that information. But it is the, you know, yeah, no, I
I would turn to the EAC for advice on that. We are not the experts in this. It's a scientific question. I'm not even sure the scientists would be able to tell you that well. It's in terms of embodied carbon, right? Because the idea is that wood will eventually decay. Will the earth capture that carbon and hold it? Or would it be released through the decay process in the atmosphere to become trees again? Yeah, again, we're not the experts in this. The borough has a policy of what it wants to achieve by 2030 that the Environmental Advisory Commission has adopted and that's what we're trying to support. It's a question for the EAC, whether you're, you know
Whether you get a chimney or not.
What's that?
Whether you get a chimney or not.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I would just ask them, do you want, do you want to let people build fireplaces or not? I mean, what do you think is important to achieving our policy? And that, we cannot reinvent every decision.
Okay.
So I'm going to ask the EAC. We'll refer to that.
Well, let's hold our feet to the fire about it though. They are not energy experts either, all of them. And I think there is a great deal of fashion involved in the discussion about energy efficiency. And I think we need to be really careful what we don't climb onto a bandwagon without fully understanding it. My plan is not to commit one way or another on this subject, but to do some research and talk to some people and find out what, and find out what true experts and other knowledgeable people who are not experts but are knowledgeable all the same, what they have to say about it. Because I'm not, as I read this document, I'm not seeing a coherent plan.
But, you know, can I throw something out there? You know, what my dad would say for all of this? He would say, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. You're never going to get, you know, 100% perfect. I mean, maybe eventually we will. Maybe we will. But for now, you know, we have to, we have to start with something.
And I'll also say, with respect to your wanting to satisfy yourself, Jen and I have spent hours reading documents from the AIA from different kind of building organizations. We've read zoning codes. We've read reports from cities all over the country. It's not like we just made this up out of fashion. We have done a lot of work to try to understand how cities have assessed this, what they found effective from a policy point of view, how those policies relate to their objectives. No system is perfect, but this is not just simply pulled out of the wind. I'm happy to share with you.
We just need to bring, we need to bring the rest of us along.
Right.
Because it's being, it's being presented as a fait accompli, pretty much. The Borough Council is, has bought into this thing. And I don't think most of the people around this table are knowledgeable about the things that some of you have found out. I want to be, I want to be one of the people that has been brought along with this idea. Right now, I'm not being presented with something that strikes me as being iffy. But maybe I'm wrong in that assumption, so I need to find out.
Well, that's a fair enough request. I will say that we have talked about this just about every month and it's not like this has been thrown on the desk. So, and we, you know, but I do think that's a fair request if people are comfortable yet with what this is based on. But you have to be open then to, you know, I guess one question is, what would you like to see in order to be brought along?
I'm curious, did you find out that there are other communities that have rebuilding incentives?
No. I've actually found that there are major cities like San Jose, Boston, I forget the third one, that are actually requiring this. It's not incentive.
Oh, see, that's, that's where I'd be coming from. I think it should just be required.
We cannot do that by law in Pennsylvania.
I think it's significant that you're talking about major cities.
And in California, San Jose, leave me alone.
But, but what we deal with in our scope of construction in our little half-square-mile borough is a universe away from a major city.
And it's a big learning curve.
And we need to think about what we're dealing with, the reality of the projects that are being constructed.
See, that's the thing, they're small scale.
Not in San Jose or Boston.
Small scale, the others just don't know.
And it's a single-family house or, or, how is a single-family house but let me finish. How is a single-family house construction relevant to this conversation? That's, that's the question.
Okay, so we just explained the only requirement of a single-family house is that they use renewable energy. That's the only requirement, which anyone in this room can do right now. The requirement of this material or that does not apply. The only thing it applies is, and so what I really think is you also, if you're asking to be led, you have to immerse yourself in what we provide.
Well, see, but this is why, I mean, there's a, there's a benefit. If you put in renewable energy in your house, the benefit is you get money back. I mean, there's no clearer benefit than that. So all I'm saying is get professionals in here, whether it's Jen or anybody, to explain to the public, whoever wants to come to a training session about, and this community group sounds great. If you can latch on to this consortium, you know, that provides renewable energy, then people will latch on to it because there's a money benefit, that they don't have to build out their property and get that. That's all I'm saying is like, it's like a win-win to subscribe to this green building.
And I would just add that it's timely as well. I mean, for anyone that has read the Inflation Reduction Act, what they are proposing is very significant. Very significant rebates for transitioning to renewable. Money is in there for getting states to use the latest energy codes. I mean, a whole, the whole gamut. Money is in there for manufacturing electric vehicle carts domestically. I mean, it's running the gamut.
Homeowners can get grants from the Inflation Reduction Act too, to just upgrade their appliances.
And that's what I'm saying. It's like, I'm not sure tying to the zoning code is, is great. I have trouble with that.
That's all we can do right now.
No, it isn't. I think we, it's a longer process than that. I think tying to zoning code is something you're locking yourself into. Good luck changing it anytime down the road. I just feel like it's
You know what the next change is going to be? It's going to be mandatory.
That's, that's, that's the best thing. And in the meantime, teach people why it's good for them.
I don't think it's iffy. I think it's wheny. It's not if, it's when. And I think that January 2023 is going to take off.
The 2020, I mean, the building code in 2021 is going to have so many requirements for green building in it that I talked to Kevin about it today. He goes, 2021? No, we're still on it. We just got 18. He doesn't know anything about 2021. I mean, it's a long process. But they're in there. Those codes are in there. And I think we're kind of wasting our time trying to tie it to zoning code.
But we can, the state law prevents us from adopting those codes.
I understand that, but I'm just saying, train the public, Earth Day. You know, I mean, it's like
You could always opt out.
Yeah.
We don't have to follow the state's code if we opt out.
What does that mean, Kevin?
We're called, we're known as what's called an opted municipality, where we choose to follow kind of the direction of the state under the original PA Act 45. We just do that to make adoption of the codes and updates much easier to track. We don't, we don't necessarily.
Never heard that before.
Oh, so we could adopt the 2021 and just say, this is it.
If we did that, we'd have to adopt every single specific code and code section we'd want. I mean, we could do the other codes in their entirety, but it's going to be much harder for John to draft up something to adopt each individual code otherwise. But yeah, that's an option.
Well, on that note, I think I've got to go to bed.
Okay. Remember, I'm adjourned.
Second.
Oh, favor of adjourned.
All right.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.